Thank you. And welcome to the regular city council meetings, September 6th to 18th. Would you please call the roll, please?
Kuss?
Here.
Kiper?
Here.
Flora?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Seivertson?
Here. First item on the agenda is...
(laughter)
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I know you've only got a month to get your game up.
Yeah, right.
Get your game in.
So we have a public hearing on proposed application for a community development block grant to the city of Ketchikan, and women in state won't turn that over to Mark at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This public hearing is required by community development block grant regulations to cover several topics, namely, an explanation of what projects are eligible for community development block grant funding, CDBG funding as an acronym, a description of the proposed WISH project and their grant application, as well as give the opportunity to the public to propose alternate projects for funding, and we need to receive public comment, not only on the WISH project, but on any other project that the public would envision suitable for our priority in this application. I'd like to briefly direct everyone's attention to the CDBG handout so that people can understand what projects qualify for funding. And again, this is a requirement, a federal requirement of the grant funding. Essentially, it's what was left on everybody's chair. It's titled "Public Hearing Handout." On the first page, it kind of gives you a little overview of what the CDBG program is. It's a program administered by the Department of Community and Economic Development of the state of Alaska. It provides up to $850,000 of funding available on a community or a competitive basis for public facility and housing projects. There are income limitations in order to qualify, but there's also a limited clientele qualification that can be applied. Here in Ketchikan, any application for CDBG funding would have to meet the limited clientele qualifications that are enumerated under A, B, C, and D of this handout. The WISH project is absolutely qualified and under limited clientele. In fact, the state's handout kind of cites some examples, and WISH will qualify under ones that they've actually cited. So I'd like to continue on with a description of the WISH project. WISH is proposing to move their shelter operations to the former Ketchikan Regional Youth Facility, the CRIF building, as we call it. In order to do so, certain renovations must first be designed and then constructed. This grant application is for $92,000 to fund the design of those renovations. It's envisioned that another grant application would be made next year in order to fund the construction. If successful, the design would start after the grant award anticipated in February of 2019 and be complete in time for the next round of funding applications for the fall of 2020. We would envision that a construction, again, a construction grant application then would follow in the fall. At this point, I'd like to recognize Agnes Moran, the Executive Director of WISH, to elaborate on their operations and what this building and move would mean to them. And I'd also mention that if you have questions on the scope of the project, the architect, Tim Whately, is here that could answer those kind of questions with that.
That should be a familiar face. I think I've been coming in front of you for the last year now. Every time you bring this on the agenda, we're here. So nothing else, you know that we are sincere and we have been very much interested in this project. WISH moved into the facility wherein currently 38 years ago. The core of that building is 100 years old. And it, as in any old building, it takes a phenomenal amount of maintenance and upkeep. And as an executive director, I do find myself on occasion weighing between direct services or maintenance. You know, I can either put the building together with bailiwick and wire, or I can provide direct services to my clients. In fiscal year 18, in our shelter program, we serviced 263 people locally. Of those, we did 181 of those folks were direct services for crisis intervention. We serviced another 170 folks that we gave shelter nights to, and so in FY18, that shelter saw 5,575 shelter nights. It's a very heavily-used building. And unlike other buildings, it never rests. We are a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week facility. There's always 15 to 20 people in that building. The building is coming to the near, near the end of its useful life, which is one of the reasons why we've been looking at the CRIF facility for the past year. The CRIF facility is a very good fit for us for numerous reasons that have been itemized before, I've told you before, but I'll reiterate them here. First of all, it's safe. Safety is one of our largest, or one of our biggest concerns when you're dealing with the population that we're dealing with. It's also ADA compliant. Our current facility is located on a very steep hill, and in the wintertime, excuse me, it's very difficult for us to get anybody who has any sort of mobility issues into and out of our shelter. If you have a wheelchair, a walker, or any mobility issues, that steep hill and ice is not a good combination to get in and out of the shelter. The CRIF facility also has the ability for us to have, finally, an outdoor play area for our kids. Nationally, 40% of the folks in shelters are children, and we run that number locally. In the 18 months I've been at WISH, I think the highest number I've seen is 18 children there. And when you have 18 kids in a building in crisis, you've got to have a place for them to burn off their energy, and telling them to go sit quietly in the children's room and play puzzles just doesn't cut it. So there's another reason we like that facility. Also, the location is ideal for us. We would be sharing a parking lot with critical services that service our population. We'd be right there with public health, WIC, we'd be close to Gateway Mental Health Services, much closer to the hospital. We do lots of hospital calls, and we're also moving ourselves closer to KIC's clinic. So there's a lot of positives for us in that configuration. And we have been looking at this building consistently for the past year. And the other thing WISH brings to the table is we do have the capacity to see the program, the project, through to the end. We have, if we do in the two phases, even if we do get the 92 this year and the 850 next year, there'll probably be a short roll between $300,000 and $400,000. We have the capacity to cover that. If we don't get grant funding, or if things go kind of sideways there, we do have the capacity to see the program through to the end. We own our building free and clear. We have some property we own free and clear. And since we've had this plan for a very long time to get us out of our current shelter, we do have some reserves that we can dedicate to it. So we've had the integrity of working on this project for a year. We've looked very hard at it. We have the capacity to continue through. It's a good fit for us, and we think it's a very good fit for the community, because we really can't remain much longer where we are. So I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Agnes. Is there anybody else to speak to this?
Good evening. Vice Mayor Seivertson, members of the city council. My name is Diane Gubatay, 27 Fifth Avenue, Ketchikan. I am here tonight on behalf of WISH. I'm a current board member and a former director on the WISH staff. I understand the council is considering this, the dispensation of the CRIF facility, and the potential to apply for the community development block grant. As you are aware, Agnes Moran, our director, has come to the council on numerous occasions this past year advocating for converting CRIF into a new WISH shelter. The current WISH shelter is over, you've heard this many times, 100 years old. Since my involvement with WISH over the past six years, there has been a great deal of money expended to keep the shelter open and operational. I cannot overemphasize how critical the shelter is to our community and other southeast Alaska communities. I know for a fact that WISH has saved women's lives. One reason I'm excited about the CRIF facility as a potential shelter, you've heard this, is the need for safety and security. I think we all hear nationally daily about incidents of violence against women once they make the decision to leave a bad relationship. While I recognize there is a need in this community for other services such as a detox facility or transitional housing fulfilled by different security of shelter for other residents, I could foresee the needs of a detox facility or transitional housing fulfilled by different arrangements similar to the Opportunity House that was developed by Community Connections. We either find an existing suitable facility, meaning WISH, because we do not have that option because of the safety and security issues. We either find an existing suitable facility, or we wait many years for the state of Alaska to solve its budget issues. If you toured the current WISH shelter, it would be readily evident that it is barely standing on its last legs, so CRIF offers us a viable solution. And you already heard Agnes say this, but I'm going to repeat it. CRIF is an amazing facility in terms of a safe shelter, and the added bonus of the fenced-in play area for children is awesome. I'm sure most of you are aware that the degree that children are at risk when their mothers decide to leave a violent relationship. And as Agnes pointed out this summer, we had children sometimes represented half of the residents in our shelter. And as she also stated, and I will back up, among the other important reasons to support modifying the CRIF facility is its proximity to critical services such as Gateway, public health, and the schools, and because these are really important to families when they're in trauma and they're trying to find stability in their lives. With all due respect to all the other interested entities, I cannot envision many options for WISH by comparison. We at WISH are very thankful and very appreciative for the support through city council, and we are excited to work with you to establish a new safer shelter. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions?
This is like the ghost of Christmas present, and now I'm the ghost of Christmas past.[814.82][814.82](laughter) I'm Gigi Pilcher, and 41 years ago, in October of 1977, WISH was actually born. That was the birth of WISH. And as Agnes said, we finally got a shelter that we moved into in 1980, and I'll never forget that. We had our grand opening on Christmas Eve. I was the first one to the building that morning, opened the door, and all the pipes had frozen over the night and burst and caved in the ceilings. We bought the old Segareedian house, for those of you who weren't raised here, you know, Alex, and he had his little barber chair and do barbering down shop. And prior, between 1977 and 1980, people took, members of WISH took, women and children who were in danger, who had been beaten, abused, or sexually assaulted into our own homes. My husband never knew when he might come home and find a woman with five kids staying in our house, but that happened a lot. There were a number of people here in Ketchikan who volunteered to do that. I wanted to bring that up, that WISH, because there seemed to be some kind of misconception that WISH is a business now. It's not a business. It's a nonprofit. It was a grassroots organization. And believe me, the people that work there aren't working there for the money. They're definitely not paid what they're commensurate with what they do. But I wanted to bring out that over the past 38 years, I could go on and on about all the things that we've had replaced at WISH, the money that we've had to get, go big, borrow. I don't think we ever stole anything, but maybe we did, I don't know. To fix the building, it would flood, I don't know how many times it flooded, and in the middle of the night, and we'd get called, and we had to go over there and get people to come in, and we'd have to suck the water out of the children's room, and then it would flood again, and then we put $30,000 into putting drains in, and we thought that fixed the problem, but it didn't, because the problem actually had something to do with something the city had did up above us. But anyway, that's beside the point, but might remind you of that. But anyway, you know, the Rasmussen Foundation was very, has been very generous to WISH, but it's sort of gotten to the point where it's like, you just keep throwing money, it's like a boat, you know? You just keep throwing money in there. And unlike some of the other shelters in the state, the shelter in Juneau, they got a million dollars to build their shelter, and they built it, and they had it for every 30 years, and then they built, got some more money, and they built another brand-new shelter. The same thing with Anchorage, I think they spent $2 million building their shelter. We got a HUD block grant, and we partnered up with senior services at that time to be able to purchase that house on First Avenue for $150,000, but over the years, I'm sure we put over a million dollars into it. And I know that I was one of the people very concerned about WISH about two years ago, but I am very, it's running wonderfully now that we've got Agnes there and a great board of directors who are on top of things, and I've been hearing lots of great comments throughout the community. One other thing I'll mention, she didn't mention it too much, but WISH services a large service area. They get women and kids from all over lower southeast Alaska, Metla, Catla, Craig, Clawak, Wrangle, Petersburg, all over the place. And they don't just serve domestic violence and sexual assault victims either. Sometimes they get people that are chronically mentally ill, that are homeless, women there. They do a lot of things that some of you in the community may not be aware of. And over the years, we've served a lot of women and children, and men too. Sometimes I, people didn't know it, but I'd sneak a man and some kids in one of the rooms on the outside between the shelter and the office, put them in the office for a night or two. But they really need this, and you're talking, it's been 38 years, we've been on a 100-year-old building, and it's time, and I really hope that you'll give great consideration. You've got a wonderful team there at WISH to work with, with Agnes and the board of directors that's there now, and I think that'll work out great, so I hope you will. If you have any questions, I see Dave nodding, and he's probably putting him to sleep, but whatever. So thank you very much, and I hope you'll, and one last thing, I wanted to say about the support. We get good support from Clincket and Haida and Ketchikan Indian Corporation, and, or I should say, Ketchikan Indian Community, I keep forgetting, we're trying to change the name back to the tribe, but about 66% of the women and children that come to WISH are Alaska Native. So please think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the speaker's block grant, right? Public hearing.
Yes. Yes. Hi, good evening. My name is Dawn Rawol, and I did come to talk about the community development block grant. And council member Minet Gage, thank you. You did help me understand what I was reading really early this, earlier this evening, and I was thinking, oh, this is wonderful for a senior center or domestic violence center, job training facility, disabled adults, and I was thinking, oh, all of those things are worth supporting. I am here to support the WISH, wishes, because I think, it sounds like they've done so much groundwork, and when I heard that, you know, they needed people to maybe come and speak about it, I just felt like I might be a good person to tell you my perspective. I have visited friends there before who, you know, they needed to use the services. I've donated in the past, things that they've asked for, I've been able to donate to them. So I have been in the building just very briefly, and it is really small, and I felt like, wow, this is great if they have the opportunity to move to a better, bigger, newer building. I mean, they could use it. I have been a member in the past, I don't think I'm a standing member right now, sorry, but yeah, I have been a member in the past. And I think it is our, I think political offices and the offices that you have right now and the work that you do, it's important that our community is taken care of. It's good we have good roads, buildings, bridges, electrical power, sewage, disposal, harbors, water, et cetera. I'm sure I'm forgetting a few, but I also think that our people in this community and quality of life for people, and people are our most important resources. So I definitely support what they're, what they're asking for. I'm going to read a text from my friend who very recently used WISH services, and she couldn't be here tonight, but I thought you might want to hear her perspective, because I know that she did appreciate what WISH did for her. And I'm not going to share her name, because she asked me not to share her name. I told her I would, but she said, no, thank you. So I'm going to read her text, just so you can see what this mom had to say. Okay, she says, okay, so I think they could definitely benefit from a bigger facility, especially for the kids, because they need more room to play and interact with their mom. The way the facility is set up now, there's not much room for kids, more room for the women that are staying there, and so it can be very frustrating for the mom who is already under so much stress, going through whatever she's going through, and trying to keep her kids entertained and keep their mind off of the possible trauma that they've endured. I think this would be a great opportunity for transition for the kids and the moms. So please, whatever can be done to help this organization get into a bigger facility, I think overall, it would help the women and children in our community get back on their feet. So that was from my mom friend who recently used the facilities. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Hello, I'm Jamie Palmer. I'm a current board member for WISH and former shelter manager, and I was doing that hard work when I was 25, and it was scary. That was terrifying. That building is frightening, because it's multi-levels, it's, there's windows everywhere, doors you have to make sure are constantly shut, alarms you're checking on to find out what it is, are the cameras pointed at the right angles, all the things we have to think about. So the public safety portion of our building is so critical. So being able to be at one level in this Fort Knox-style facility up the hillside would be amazing. Of course, right now, it's kind of cold, and it's more concrete and metal than we would like in a shelter, so the plan that we have that is, you know, beautifully drawn out, the draft, is going to be much more cozy. The current budget could support the building the way it is with the utilities and, you know, all the, all the things that you have to pay for in order to house a bunch of humans. And CRIF, you know, what they did was fabulous, and we'd love to take it over and continue supporting this community and keeping people safe. The energy efficiency changes that we would make would bring down some of those utility bills, we think, with, you know, just lighting changes, for goodness sakes, and probably not what the city wants to hear, we're going to spend less on utilities, but, but we will, because we're a nonprofit, and that's what we need to do. But I won't take up too much of your time, just that, you know, there's a lot of people who support this, and we know that now you're being approached by two other entities. Of course, last minute, as people do, Agnes has been laying the groundwork for a long time, and it shows our commitment and dedication that we have this draft plan, and we've started, we've, we've gone through all kinds of measures to look for other grant opportunities. We know the state funding's not going to happen, and that old house really could be turned into something else. Either of these other two entities, we could, man, you know, just sitting at the table with them, we could easily turn that facility into something with their renovation budgets that would suit their needs, while we need something super sound and safe in one level to support all of the range of populations we see, whether they're elderly with mobility issues, or, you know, 25 with children and using a wheelchair. We need to be able to house them and keep them safe at night and in a cozy, comfortable place. But we have a lot of board members here, there's a lot of staff members here too, the current shelter managers here in the back, so for questions, you know, there's plenty of people who can speak to this, and we're all here. Let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gee, I hope I'm not the only man speaking here to advocate for WISH. So good evening, council members. I'm Felix Wong, and I reside at 469 Forest Park Drive. So once again, I'm here to advocate for women in safe homes and their desire to occupy the former CRIF building as the new safe shelter. Former CRIF facility as-is fits much of WISH's needs as already described by, by the previous few people, and yes, it is skookum, as they say, and that is a very important aspect to safety. Additional to its location and proximity to safety services and healthcare, so-so along the bus routes, and that makes it a lot easier to get around and continue on with your daily lives as you try to transition from an abusive household. I myself am a child of an emotionally abused single mother, and I cannot emphasize enough the good work that WISH has been doing for the afflicted women and children, as well as their educational efforts in K-HI to empower our youth to identify unhealthy relationship dynamics early. This, this organization here is doing so much good work for the needs that, that we have here in our region. So I believe the CRIF facility will aid in their continual support efforts significantly, and I hope you support them too.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Yar from 283 South Point Higgins, Ketchikan, and everything I would like to say has been said, so I will just say that I support WISH taking over CRIF. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I speak a little bit off-topic. I spoke to the council here a few weeks ago regarding...
This is in regards to the public hearing. Pure and to be heard coming up after that. Okay. Sorry. Thank you. Anybody else to speak in the public hearing?
Hello, I'm Rebecca Juncker. I'm the shelter manager currently at WISH. I've been there for over three years, and I can just agree with everything that's been said, I won't repeat it, but the WISH has the full support of, of this vision, and I absolutely believe that victims of domestic violence and sexual assault deserve the top-notch security where they can feel safe while they're getting back on track and on their feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll make this super quick.[1692.65][1692.65](laughter)
You're not done yet?
Chief White with the police department. WISH, it's obvious that they need a new building, the question is, where is it going to be? I would urge you to keep it in city limits. The troopers are a fine organization, but I feel the city police department can provide better 24-hour service. Over my career, we have had to go out to WISH on numerous occasions, and I really do feel with our, even short-staffed, we have probably a better response time than, than they will receive outside of city limits. I enjoy working with Agnes and the shelter, excuse me, and the shelter, so I would just urge you to consider keeping it in city limits when you're looking at a place to put it. Any questions?
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. Have we met all the criteria as far as you can tell, Mark?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would just specifically call for public comment on accepting alternative proposals, just to make sure we can check that box in our application.
All right. Thank you. So is there anybody here to speak to alternative proposals? Seeing none. I think we fulfill the obligations for the hearing on the, on the grant application, and we will close that public hearing and move on to communications. And in communications, we have official proclamation, whereas behavioral health is a central part of one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental health substance and substance use disorders work, treatment is effective, and people recover... substance and substance use disorders work, treatment is effective, and people recover in Ketchikan community around the nation. And whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyle, both physical and emotional, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs and problems, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment, recovery support services. And whereas citizens of the community of Ketchikan are affected by those conditions, and whereas, to help more people achieve and stay in long-term recovery, the City Council, along with the federal and state agencies, invite all residents of Ketchikan to participate in National Recovery Month. Now, therefore, it is resolved, uh, by Lou Williams, the third mayor of the city of Ketchikan in Dubai here, proclaim the month of September 2018 as National Recovery Month, and call upon the citizens of Ketchikan community to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's Recovery Month theme, "Join the Voices for Recovery: Strengthen Families and Communities." Signed this day by Robert Severson, Vice Mayor. Is there anybody here to accept this proclamation? Who would like to accept? All right. Please say a few words.
Um, my name is Christine Fury, and I'm just gonna come right out and say, I am an addict in recovery. Um, I'm a woman in long-term recovery, and I was born and raised in Ketchikan. This is where I did all of my damage. Um, I started using when I was 12-years-old and I got clean when I was 27. Um, you guys have no idea what this means to me today. I am so incredibly proud of our community over the last couple of months. I feel like we are growing by leaps and bounds in recognizing, um, the issues at hand, but not just the issues, I think that, um, in our town as well as across the country, the issues are very apparent. Um, but to have our community recognize that, um, recovery is possible and that treatment works, I mean, uh, it's amazing to me, because I struggled to get clean for a long time, I was afraid, um, that I couldn't do it, that I was never gonna be able to get past the stigma associated with the damage that I had done. And today, I don't feel that way. Today, I'm honest, open, like, I don't know, I'm a well-respected member in this community, and I fight hard for people like me. Um, me and my friends are proof that recovery is possible. Treatment truly does work, um, but it takes a community, a whole entire community, to get all the pieces back together. Um, we all know that Ketchikan has a problem, but our solutions are coming in full force. Me and my friend Vanny here have been talking lately about, I mean, our little coined slogan is "We Are Recovery on Fire," and I'm so glad that you guys are willing to help us, help us do this, because it's not, it's just beginning.
Hi, um, my name is Danielle Nickich Duckworth, and, um, I just want to quickly say thank you so much for, um, backing this up. Uh, it is a national movement, but having the city of Ketchikan and the members of the community back up what we're trying to do here in recovery is so awesome and just ensures, um, and like, gives me the, the motivation and the hope that there is, that the stigma is starting to go away, and, um, I'm really happy to be a part of it. And the Wellness Coalition and the Task Force Reed has been amazing, and I'm just, thank you guys so very much.
I want to thank the City Council for making this proclamation. Um, I know a lot of people here in Ketchikan that are suffering, and to hear your support makes a huge difference in not only their lives, but my life, too. It gives me the hope to keep on going forward, and I appreciate that, thank you so much.
I guess that's everything, thank you so much.
Thank you. So also, under communications, we did have, uh, the letters in regards to the support for the, uh, public hearing. We also have, uh, an EPA, State Two Disinfective Biotic, uh, Report. We also have, um, a letter from the employees of the city Ketchikan Public Utilities in regards to, uh, wagers and compensation. We also have, um, a letter in regards to Eagle Ordinance, uh, from, uh, a marine pilot, uh, laying on the table. And we also have, uh, a request that I put on to, uh, support the appointment of the CIFA CEO to the State Civic Road which rule, um, board that the state of Alaska is going to, um, provide and to, to provide, uh, direction. Um, and we can move that item, uh, for consideration to, at the same time that we have the CIFA report, if that's okay. And that's all I have under communications. Um, that brings us down to persons to be heard. Uh, the first person that I have is Matt Armstrong.
Wow, those are some, uh, tough acts to follow. Hi, I'm Matt Armstrong, president of the Board of Governors for First State Players, and just wanted to come by and let you guys know what, uh, we've been up to since we are Ketchikan's Community Theater. Uh, over the summer, we had our art school program, we put on a very good production of Singing in the Rain Junior. We had 54, uh, kids, uh, signed up for art school classes this year, and 20 of those kids were there on scholarships, because our policy is to never turn anyone away based on an inability to pay. So, again, for, you know, three, four weeks in July and August, we, uh, helped 54 kids learn some really cool theater skills and other, uh, things that can help them in life, public speaking, stage presence, things like that. And, uh, we also had, uh, auditions for our fall musical recently. We're doing Mamma Mia this year in November, early November. We had 80 people come out for auditions, which is just really awesome, a lot of new faces, and we have a cast of, uh, 42 people. It's gonna be a really fun show, definitely encourage everyone to come out. I believe most of you guys remember at least some of the 70s, so sort right up your alley with the ABBA music. I'm sure some of you probably have some bell bottoms laying around that you can probably still fit into. Dave?
That was for you, Dave.
And also, coming up, uh, coming up in September 22nd, at, uh, the city's Ted Ferry Civic Center, we have our Divas and Devo Show. It's our, one of our big fundraisers for First State Players, and we have a really good field of contestants this year. For the Divas, we have Danny Marcano, uh, Shelley Hill, Kelly Burke, Sarah Fitzgerald. For the Devos, we have Steve O'Shea. We have two bills this year, Bill Tatsuda and Bill Urquhart, and we have Patrick Weibel. So I definitely encourage you to maybe snag a ticket, they are going pretty fast, you can see some really awesome, uh, performances, and you can, uh, enjoy the company, uh, the hosting abilities of your esteemed colleague, Mr. Klyfer, for the evening. And also, we're gonna be, uh, starting, uh, social issues drama, uh, social issues drama classes for K-HI and Schoenbar students very soon. Uh, that was made possible by a grant from the Ketchikan Community Foundation. And we also, uh, you know, later, you know, next year, we'll have our Jazz and Cabaret Festival and our standard slated production, so if you have any questions, let me know. But, uh, again, we are Ketchikan's Community Theater, and we are always happy to see, uh, everyone come out and, uh, play with us or just come in and take in a show. And, yeah. Thanks.
Next, we have Clayton Hancock.
Uh, good evening, Clayton Hancock, 626 Schoenbar Road. Um, I'd like to start by reading the letter that the city, uh, of Ketchikan employees sent to you, and then follow it with some thoughts of my own. Uh, "To the Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, we the employees of the city of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Public Utilities respectfully ask that each employee receive an increase in pay equal to what was recently approved by the City Council for the KPU power alignment of an additional $2 per hour. The 2014 wage study by Ralph Anderson and Associates, which the city opted not to implement, showed that the city and utility non-craft employees in Ketchikan were underpaid across the board. In an effort to stay competitive in the job market and retain personnel, the City Council voted to approve a $2-an-hour raise to the power lineman. The issues of competitiveness in the job market and retention of skilled labor are problems that are city-wide, not exclusive to one department, as highlighted by the fact that there are more than 20 positions vacant throughout the city. The City Council has informed us they want to commission another wage study before addressing the issue at hand. However, an exception was made for the power lineman. The employees are requesting that the City Council treat all employees the same and not delay action by giving the same $2-an-hour increase immediately. Should the new study show that employees are still below the median, it can be addressed at that time." And, uh, then some personal thoughts of my own, and I'm hoping too, not too much of this is repetitive, but, "It has been acknowledged by the Council that you were aware of the problem of positions throughout the city and KPU being underpaid. It has also been recognized that personnel retention is a city-wide issue as shown by the 23 vacancies currently open on the city website, and that these positions are not limited to just one or two departments. We've been told that although an exception has been made for the power lineman, the rest of the city and KPU employees will have to wait six to eight months for another wage study to be completed so we can see where we stand before action is taken. It has recently been pointed out that the Council has made another exception for the wiremen and electricians at a substantially higher amount of $8.50 an hour. When the power linemen were given their raise, the rest of the employees throughout the city and KPU felt that they were being treated unfairly by, by having to wait for the completion of a wage study. Now that the second department is scheduled to be given a raise pending this evening's executive session, the employees feel an even greater sense of indignation. As referenced in our previous letter to the Council, Ralph Anderson and Associates performed a wage study in 2014 at the cost of $35,800. This study showed the city employees were underpaid across the board. I was on the union negotiating team in 2014 when we entered into contract negotiations in September of that year. The representatives of the city refused to discuss the findings of the wage study and completely stonewalled any attempt to open a dialogue on the subject. I'm not sure what I find more troubling, as a city employee, that the city should shut down any attempt to discuss the wage study, or as a taxpaying citizen, that the City Council would spend almost $40,000 of the taxpayer's money on a report just to disregard it. Needless to say, based on the City Council's actions, or perhaps I should say, lack of actions, we the employees of the city of Ketchikan and KPU feel that the idea of another wage study is a poor usage of our time and resources, and the results will be no different than they were four years ago. I would like to close with this thought. There are a variety of different jobs throughout the city, some highly visible in the public eye, and others that operate more behind the scenes. Nonetheless, all of these positions are vital parts of the system overall. The fact is that no single department can complete the functions of the unit as a whole without the people in all the other departments. By giving only one or two departments a pay increase, it is driving a wedge not only between the departments, but also between the employees and the City Council, creating an us-versus-them feeling. Whether you're aware of, aware of it or not, you have a very dedicated and skilled group of employees throughout the city and KPU, and all that we ask is to be treated with respect and equality. Thank you."
Next, we have Mike Glenn.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. Appreciate you guys taking the time to, uh, hear from us. Um, I've been asked to advocate on behalf of, uh, the folks at Public Works specifically. Um, and I think, while the message has been pretty clear by Mr. Hancock, I think it's important that we relay, um, really the root of it. This is a very proud group, a very proud, dedicated group of men and women. Um, they're very committed to, uh, the city of Ketchikan, the residents, and the infrastructure that we have here. Um, I think the frustration grows because, uh, as budgets get tight, you guys have a very difficult, difficult job, there's no doubt about it. Um, as budget gets tight, more and more gets asked from Public Works. And the Public Works departments, um, under the guidance of Mark Hilson, um, and our supervisor, Nick Kepler, the rest of the supervisors in Public Works, um, have really allowed us to, uh, gain new skills, take on new tasks, and really help keep, uh, the infrastructure going, uh, at a budget price. Uh, we've taken on new responsibilities of road building, uh, taken on new responsibilities of keeping the infrastructure that's typically been contracted out to, uh, Seekonk, Dawson, uh, folks like this. And we're very proud that we get to do that, and we, we actually thank the Council and thank the administration for allowing us to gain these skills. And I think the frustration, the root of the frustration is that, um, with these new skills, with, uh, the help, the assistance of, of saving money, um, that the guys feel, and the women feel a little bit disregarded. Um, now, that's not to say that they're still not proud, they're still not, um, excited to do their work, because, listen, I'm, I'm the new guy, and I've never seen a more dedicated group of people than our Public Works Department. I want to tell you a couple of quick stories, uh, just to kind of put it in perspective. Uh, I know your time's valuable, so I'll keep it short. I've got two coworkers, we'll call one Jason. Uh, Jason started out working night shift, emptying garbage. Uh, now Jason is running grading machines, running crews, doing major construction for Public Works. Uh, I've got another crew member, we'll call him Mark. Started out weeding, started out running a weed eater, cutting grass, now he runs a crew of three or more people on major construction jobs. You guys are familiar with Spruce Mill, you guys are familiar with Bostwick, um, and Grading Copper Ridge, those are all things that, that Mark has taken on, uh, as a crew leader. And you're probably asking, what's the punchline? Well, the punchline is, is while these guys are, and women are very, very dedicated, love the evolution of their job, Jason is in a position where he has to have two roommates. He has no car payments, he's free and clear of his debt, but in order to live, he's gotta have two roommates to afford his house. Mark is in a position where he's got two children, and he literally is renting his house while he stays at his parents' house. Now, we all knew what we signed up for when we took this job, and we're gonna remain dedicated, we're gonna remain diligent, and we have a lot of faith that as time goes, Council, Administration's gonna take care of us. However, we're trying to relay where this, this uneasiness is coming from, especially in the midst of some major, significant increases being thrown towards retention of other skilled labor. Not to say that we're ungrateful, as a matter of fact, it looks like we brought you guys a treat that's out in the parking lot that we get to show off. Um, our sweeper out there, I don't know if you guys all got to see it, but Wilbur brought that in today, so I'm sure you guys will get a chance to look at it. So we're very grateful for the opportunities that are given. But I just wanted to relay to you, um, where some of this root is coming from. Uh, do you guys have any questions for us?
Thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Great as the gay roads.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Severson and council members. I think it's great that the city gave the KPU lineman a wage increase and is considering doing the same for the KPU electricians. By doing so, you acknowledge that they are below the median, but what about the other employees in over 20 job openings that the city currently has? Many of KPU employees' wages are based on a percentage of the lineman-based wage, increasing the premium doesn't affect them. And the compensation study, as was mentioned earlier, was done over four years ago, it showed every represented position in the study was substantially below the median. I seriously doubt another compensation study will reveal anything different other than the gap has grown wi- wider. The city and KPU are fortunate to have a very hard-working and dedicated group of employees. Please consider the impact this disparity of giving select groups wage increases has on employment morale. Any questions? Thanks very much.
Thank you. Paul Jarvey.
Hi, my name is Paul Jarvey. I own three businesses in Ketchikan, Julie's, at three locations. And the word on the street is, some of the businesses downtown are gonna try to, um, lighten up on your hawking rules, and I hope the Council looks very negatively on, on that. I'm a local person, I have customers come through my door every day, and they say, geez, we feel like we're in Tijuana. And that's not the image that, I've been, I've been here for over 40 years, and I've never thought of Ketchikan as being like Tijuana, but you know what I'm talking about. Come in my door, come in my door, here's a free gift, here's this, here's that. The local businesses, Gamblin's, um, the Michelson's, um, Julie's, we don't have to resort to, resort to... to that. And I don't see any reason why the hawking law should be lightened up on. I think it should be more strict. I know that there's, the Salmon Landing area is private land, and the hawking rules are a little different down there. You're going to have the same problem in the future when the Nordby's rectangle does get developed, that'll be private land. How will your hawking laws affect that area? That's a future problem. You don't have to address it today, but it's out there. The long and the short of it is, we want an even, even playing field. We feel like those of us that are local that don't go out and hawk, we feel we're losing out on sales. And I know that you have people hired to monitor the laws and write citations. I just wonder if the citations should be a little bit, have a little bit more to them in the future. I collect sales tax so that these folks behind me can get some money for their jobs. You know that I pay my sales tax collections to the borough and city. All we're asking for is a level playing field, tighten up on the laws if you can, and be aware that there's a problem in the future. Any questions?
Thank you. The next four individuals have already spoke to the public hearing. Do you wish to speak in this particular? Is that good, do you think?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Craken.
Thank you for your. Actually, your little thing for September is Awareness Month for ruining the stigma on addiction and its correlation with mental illness, that actually has something to do with what I'm here to speak about. As I approached you guys with a few weeks ago, I was doing an investigation into some of the harassment, as I mentioned, the lower-level citizens, addicts being some of the people victimized by this harassment. As I'll reiterate, some of that included getting my brakes bled, someone breaking in, urinating all over my mattress, tampering with the surveillance system that I had. I've been keeping KPD and state troopers, along with Border Patrol, updated on my investigation every step of the way. Last Friday, I was actually called in by Deputy Chief Mattson, and when I went in to speak with him, I started a GoFundMe page because I'm looking for, basically for a mental health assessment. Because the result of that being, I'm not schizophrenic, right? But when I approach people with, with the problems I'm experiencing, and trying to share what other people experienced, these testimonies and witnesses that I have, they're all labeled, like that stigma's placed on them, as mentally ill. And when people speak to them, you know, well, you're ill, you know, get some help, talk to somebody about it. And when I talked to Mattson about it, he says, well, we'd like to help. And I said, great, I'd love to cooperate. What do we got to do? And then he said, well, we're going to detain you at Ketchikan Health, at Ketchikan Medical Peace Health, and for 72 hours, and we're going to ship you off to Juneau or to Anchorage for this assessment. And I said, you know, the only thing I'm concerned about is, you know, A, why can't we organize it here in town? And I'm worried that it's a government psychologist, but I'm willing to participate. And he said, well, if, if you don't go now, we're going to detain you. So it was a non-voluntary, basically. He called me in there to take me to, so I could get that label, so he could, so they could stamp my paper with that same mental, you know, schizophrenic label. Upon assessment, speaking with the doctor and the people from Gateway, I was released prior to the 72-hour hold because I was not a danger to myself nor anyone else. And because, when, when really you take a look at this and approach it, you take, there's two facts, basically. It's, you have the mental illness, and then you have a scientific, I mean, it's electronically-induced condition, right? There is US patents, there is, and the science behind these patents literally can tell you what parts of the brain are manipulated, you know, what the technology does, and how it, basically exactly how it works. I mean, it's, it's fact, and it's in science. But the boxes that are checked for schizophrenia and for this are both the same. This is what they say is a paranoid schizophrenic in a sense, right? So basically, what I'm getting at is that I hear voices in my head. When this, when this entire thing started for me, right, it started with harassment, with the physical harassment. I've done some more investigation, I've collected some people who also experience this. Many of them, I can't say many, but a few of the people that I've spoke with were victims of suicide, and I've spoke with their widows or their spouses or their significant others, and they have the same reports. Basically, some of them hearing the voice of God, pressuring them into suicide. Now, you know, there's, the medical definition for this would be a psychosis, and the definition of that would be a delusion, a total loss of reality. And so basically to where, you know, that's, that's how they explain you experiencing these things. But when I experience these things, you know, I guess, back up a little bit, my argument towards that would be, if they're a delusion or it's a schizophrenic event, basically there's a separation. You're, you're having these thoughts, but you're thinking these thoughts are actually someone else's thoughts, right? But if, if that were the case, they would have to be grounded in, you know, your experiences, your memories, your morals, your fears. But from what I experienced, it's none of that. I, I had this voice come into my head, I was running a small business, I had three employees, it was the pinnacle of my life, I was doing better than I ever had before. I was using small amounts of illegal drugs. This voice came into my head, basically started threatening me, you know, threatening my life, pressured me towards suicide. At one point, you know, I called my family and relatives and told them that, you know, if I end up dead or shot, basically I didn't do it, someone murdered me, right? Well, this sounds paranoid, but when I go and start looking around, my neighbor, just 200 yards away, went through the same experience, heard the voice of God. He ended up visiting the same hospital in Spokane, Washington, that I did, where he ran out through the doors and jumped off the bridge. Actually, when I checked into that hospital, this voice in my head told me a story about him and another individual whose name I had never heard prior. This name that I never heard prior, when I researched it on Google, turned out to be three blocks from where I'd lived. On, I lived at 412, the address for which was 708 North Point Higgins. Now, the other individual lived on Matley Road, just down from where I did. I spoke with other people who are also afflicted on North Point Higgins 5, in which I have testimony with so far. So what I'm getting at is, I, I need help. Basically, it's, I, the why, basically, you know, why we're targeted, I believe it's because there's this stigma of mental health, right? Where when, when someone comes out and approaches their family, their loved ones, or anyone else with what, what I've been dealing with, they say, get some help. You know, they say sober up, talk to a psychologist, get some sleep. Well, I've been sober the vast majority of this time that I've been going through this. And, and, you know, it, things have changed throughout the course of, of what I've been going through. My overall experiences, I have a list of names and some of, of, you know, I, I don't want to share them with you because I know probably the majority of them are inaccurate. But among them, I believe there, you know, you can, I can find and identify someone who is basically traveled between a certain periods where, I guess to elaborate, just so, when I came back to town, I started looking into this, I went down and spoke to, to the police, this, this voice in my head started to feel the pressure, basically because I was, where I was digging at were people who I believe was involved. And then they started putting me through these torture scenarios, basically where, and this is a voice in my head, where I would experience this person being tortured. And I mean, it's nothing that, searching for an explanation in, with a medical definition requires a hypothesis, requires a theory with no absolute definition, right? They couldn't tell you exactly what, they can tell you it's psychosis and that you lost touch with reality. But when you approach it from the other angle, you can literally say they used this patent, this patent, this patent, they affected these parts of your brain, and this is what they did, right?
Sean, to get to it, what can we do for you?
What can we do? So I need help looking into this. Like I said, I approached the KPD, I approached law enforcement, and all I've gotten from it was put in jail, basically. They illegally detained me because I'm looking into this, right? So I'm approaching you guys looking for help. I'm going to file a suit against the city. I'm, I've been collecting testimonies, I get mostly just awareness, you know, who, how do, how can I do, you know, what can I do if, if law enforcement? If all the people who are tasked with protecting us aren't going to do shit about this, what do I do? Pardon my language, I'm sorry.
Josh, can I ask you something?
Yes.
So you're asking for help?
Yes, ma'am.
With the voices?
I'm asking for help in figuring out who's doing this to, to the citizens, to the people here in town, yes.
Okay. So you want to get an assessment? Am I, is that what I'm?
Yes, I am willing to participate for a mental health assessment, yes, ma'am.
When they do the 72-hour hold?
Mm-hmm.
Usually that's their way of doing an evaluation to assess whether or not you need an evaluation on a mental health. Yeah, they, they tend to say they will only hold you if you are suicidal. The person on this piece of paper, Susan, at the hospital, is extremely good.
Does she work with Gateway?
No, she works, she's at Peace Health.
They, they also?
She's a psychologist.
Just to say, Gateway Mental Health, I'd spoke with the administrator there, he also agreed to help me. He sees, they see a lot of people victimized by this, he agreed to help me with the statistics.
The reality of it, Sean, is the city of Ketchikan doesn't have necessarily all those resources to help you, but if there's some direction that we can give you, we'd be very happy to do that.
Okay. So speaking with a psychologist, yes, that, that will help my case in proving that I'm not schizophrenic or what I'm dealing with. But the, the fact of the matter is, is it's not going to put a stop to, to the, to the citizens and people being subjected to this treatment. That's what I'm speaking with you.
Sean, if you want to help other people, you have to help yourself first, okay? What I would suggest is going and doing the paper, filling it out, and seeing, if you've already talked to Gateway, that's another great avenue. Help, have one of them help you fill out the application.
Yes, ma'am.
And then go through the assessment. Occasionally, they do send people to Anchorage?
Yes, ma'am.
Or Juneau because they?
That's why they detained me.
It's not, it's not a government-run, it's just, a lot of times, we don't have the programs that are necessary.
Yeah, I just expressed my concern.
Oh, I understand.
But was willing to cooperate.
And I appreciate you coming to us, but I don't think it's our, it's not in the bailiwick of the city council. I think that if we can get some help through the health systems, that would be best.
Yeah, talk to, talk to the guy at Gateway, but she, I know what you're.
I appreciate it. And, you know, sorry, everybody, if you're concerned about my mental stability, but I assure you, I'm fine. Just, you know, continue to reach out for help and just don't get us. Thank you.
Thomas?
Is that Martha?
Yeah, Martha. It looked like maybe. So maybe it's Thomas.
Okay, here I am once again. Hi, guys. Okay. So we're going to talk about the ordinance that you guys want to pass, correct? My name's Martha Thomas, and I live in Ketchikan, Alaska. The ordinance number 18-1884 is an ordinance that you guys are talking about passing regarding feeding the eagles. It doesn't talk anything about the pigeons, there's issues about pigeons, hummingbirds. It seems that the ordinance is brought up because of a few people. People have been feeding eagles and birds for several years. This is pointing at individuals, not everyone. So with the ordinance, you're opening the doors for fees in the city, fees in the borough, i.e. Wolf Point KYLS building. According to the newspaper today, if everybody's read the paper today, it says that people that are in violation, it would go against the property owner also. So I get to go to the borough, and everybody knows where Wolf Point is, correct? So Wolf Point is open, owned by the State of Alaska. Usually people go on their lunch break and they go to Wolf Point, and they go look at the airplanes, and they whatever, you know, eat their lunch, and then little kids throw their french fries out. Well, the seagulls come and eat. So that little kid, or that adult that throws a fry out, is subject to a $500 fine, up to a $500 fine, let alone the State of Alaska or the city of Ketchikan. There you go. Okay, next piece of property. Here we go, Cars Safeway, seagulls, right? Seagulls at the Cars Safeway. Cars Safeway is owned by Cars. Cars is a property owner, as you guys all know, so they would be subject to a fine, let alone the person that throws the french fries out or McDonald's, right? You go to McDonald's, so there's the Cars Safeway. So, here we go. Third piece of property. Oops, and I think I gave you the wrong one, this is a KYLS building, the Cars Safeway. And then we have our building. The reason that this ordinance, this is a Ketchikan-Guardway borough, is the KYLS building, the kids that go to the baseball fields, which was by, by the mayor's house, go to the KYLS building, they're playing baseball. The kid decides, hey, you know what, I'm done with those fries, I'm going to throw them on the trash, or on the floor. That kid and the parent is subject to a $500 fine, let alone the city of, that would be actually the borough. Because they're the property, and that's according to your new eagle ordinance on the agenda. I think, on my behalf, I think there's a lot of more research that needs to be done before you guys decide to pass an ordinance. This seems like it's pointed at and directed at individuals. So, unfortunately, my husband's not feeling well today, so I'm going to speak on his behalf, and I will let you know what he has to say. So, one other thing in regards to me, this ordinance is going to open a can of worms, I think. So you'll need to hire police to police this, you'll have to hang signs, and all this is costing the taxpayers unnecessary money, that we need to spend it on mental health, drug addiction. The people that we talked to before, they could use the money more than we can doing it against an eagle ordinance. So, you know, I don't think the police want to police this, I don't think, you guys might need to do a little bit more research. I think the reason why a lot of the topics that we're talking about today is because there's three people on the city council that are up for election or reelection, so everything wants to be done now. And now let's speak one more minute, take a breath, we got it. On behalf of my husband and myself, so my name's Martha Thomas once again, I'm here tonight to talk about the feeding of the birds. This all stems from a property at 2531 Tongus. This is what's causing the ordinance against the whole people of Ketchikan, that's all of you guys, you guys are all subject to a fine of the $500, just because somebody decided to pass an ordinance, or you guys want to pass an ordinance. So, we bought this building, we did our homework with the city, state, and feds, and they all said, yes, you can feed the eagles, right? So we're stemming again with the eagles. Now this, now you guys drafted this ordinance, you've included seagulls and ravens and crows, but again, you haven't talked about the pigeon. My neighbor didn't like me feeding the pigeons, so are you saying he, he can go up to you guys and say, you know what, let's do an ordinance against the pigeons? You know what, I don't like my neighbor, she's got too much garbage in her house, let's do an ordinance against that. We, we don't want to be, everything, too many rules and regulations cause chaos. So, we're going to be closed for the next seven months as we're a seasonal business. And if this ordinance, I'm assuming that there'll be quite a few $500 if you guys choose to pass this, there better be a few $500 tickets, because if not, it, like I said, it looks like it's directed at us. Seagulls at Wolf Point or crows at seagulls behind the mall, if not, I'm the only tickets that's written in May of 2019, when we decide to throw another piece of herring to the, to the eagle, and we get the first $500 ticket, then the ordinance should be called the sourdough tour ordinance, because it's all been aimed at us. So, you know, I'm sure these taxpayers and these kids and my child's children, excuse me, when they throw the french fry to the seagull, or the crow, or maybe the pigeon, and the seagull decides to eat it, and then Mr. Officer comes to my door, or my child, and says, here's your $500 ticket, and then they go to Cars Safeway and say, you know what, that person's on your property, so you're getting a ticket too. So if you guys ever want to pass an ordinance like this, I think you guys all need to do your research. Because only one place in the whole State of Alaska, and that's in Homer, Alaska, where the woman decided to, to feed 500 pounds of carnage or whatever a day, that's what caused an ordinance. So we would be the only second place in the whole State of Alaska with an ordinance. So, again, I hope you guys do your research, and you guys banish this because kids and adults alike, let alone property owners. So, again, I hope you guys do your research and you guys banish this because kids and adults alike, let alone property owners, KYLS, the borough, and then the city, because you guys own that property right at whatever you call that, Wolf Point, you're subject to your own fine. And that would cost us the taxpayers money. So, I would rather give taxpaying money and help people instead of fining them. Because people are moving out of Ketchikan on a daily basis, and I would want to keep our people here. Any questions? Comments, concerns, criticisms? So, whatever. So, thank you, and I think I will take my stuff, and thank you for your time, everybody, and congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Martha, you want to please?
That brings us to Carrie Stark.
Good evening, my name is Carrie Starky, and I am here representing the Chamber of Commerce. And I actually did not originally plan on having anything to stand up and say, I was here on behalf of the letter for the tax-free day that you guys have on your consent calendar. I just wanted to be here in support of that, but was encouraged by a board member to come up, introduce myself, and I just want to say that I look forward to continuing to foster a good relationship between the Chamber of Commerce and the city. And if you had any questions for me, I would be happy to answer them, but if not, just a quick introduction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the bottom of the list for persons to be heard, is there anybody else that didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Come on up.
Hello sir, my name is Jeremiah Roberts, I've been a lifelong Alaskan, I was born on this island and actually really hope to die on this island, still being proud of the island I live on. Last year I worked for a dual company, I worked for Sour Dough and Dolly's Entertainment, which is Martha, the woman you just heard from, her company. I am also a native Alaskan. I actually find it very, very deplorable bringing any kind of action against Martha and Rick. Because they are only trying to educate people about a species, trying to propagate the species and help the species to live longer. I've read the paperwork, it says that their actions are causing these birds to be in the path of planes. Their actions are bringing the birds away from the planes, not putting them into the flight path. I've read the paperwork, it said things like the feces from these birds are destroying the roofs. I've looked at those roofs, they're the same roofs as the Noah building down there on Dock One. I have never once heard Noah say anything about those birds. Birds lie in that building every morning, same with the fire department building down there every morning. I've worked multiple jobs on this island and off. I've been tour guide, I've been everything from oceanic oil spill response. And there's been people on my crew, out there responding to an oil spill, who wished for somebody like Martha and Rick. Keep those birds out of our oil spill and keep them alive. What you're doing is wrong. I just wanted to step up and tell you, if you have any conscience at all, think about what you're doing. What you're doing is wrong.
Thank you.
Who's that? Come on up.
I hope we have EMTs here too, in case I think. I just wanted to put-
Name it.
Oh, Andrea Wargie. I live here in Ketchikan, I'm from the solid waste division, I work in the scale house. My address is on Denali Avenue. I'd like to start by saying, I mean no disrespect to the city, my job, or the council by speaking here tonight, quite the opposite really. I love my job, I love the people, the community that I see daily, and I feel very proud to be working for the city of Ketchikan. However, with the cost of living and my pay scale, I'm having a very hard time making ends meet, and I know I'm not alone in that. I know there are definitely others in my division who are at least in similar situations. I'm a single mother, and I'm the head of my household, and three to four days into each pay period, I am flat broke. No extras, just necessities. I don't even have any idea why I'm crying except for the fact that I'm nervous. I split my bills in half for the fifth and the twentieth. I get one tank of gas that has to last, and one good load of groceries, and hope that at least I makes it close to the next paycheck. I am constantly forced to seek out other job opportunities and look at all other job listings that become available to me, just to see if the wage may be higher. When the truth is, I would love to be able to stay right where I am. In closing, I respectfully urge the city council to consider, at least in part, the two thousand fourteen compensation study that clearly showed that we are paid below the median wage for our positions. I would love to stay working for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that comes to the end of persons to be heard. We'll move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. If there's no objections, I'd like to add seven A one, seven A two, seven A four, B three, B four, B five, and B six. Well, no, B six, I would like to move to the beginning of the meeting in that we have an individual here to make a presentation, and I don't think I want him to sit through all of our business that we have to do in regards to city appropriations.
Could we take a little break while we-
Let's take a break. We'll take a short break. We're back on. Do I have a motion to consent?
So moved.
Consent.
Consent.
Move in second. Madam Clerk, could you read the item?
I would love to.
Affirmative minutes regarding the city council meeting of August sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. Liquor license premises diagram change for the Alaska Fish House. Establishing October sixth, two thousand eighteen, as a sales tax holiday. Extension of the agreement between the city of Ketchikan and the University of Alaska Southeast for the administration of the Ketchikan Campus Library. Two thousand eighteen Fire Department Command Vehicle number fifty-two, seven fifty-nine replacement with candle fort. The two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-one Ketchikan Public Library Technology Plan. Exempting the procurement of software upgrades for the telecommunications division's four G slash LTE network from the competitive bidding quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, that's what Ericsson Incorporated. Ordinance number eighteen eighteen seventy-nine, amending section nineteen point one-four point oh-one-oh of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Uniform Plumbing Code Adopted Regarding Plumbing Codes In Use By The City Of Ketchikan, and that's in first reading. Exempting the procurement of police department camera system upgrades from competitive bidding quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code with Axon Enterprise Incorporated. The election of a non-payee city designation. Recruitment for the position, oh, did you want to add that one?
I would add, I'd like to say-
Recruitment for the position of the city clerk. Ordinance number eighteen dash eighteen eighty-two, amending chapter eleven point one-two telecommunications service and rates of the Ketchikan Municipal Code in first reading. Professional services agreement for the Shonbar Creek Water Crossing Project, Dowell. And the procurement of professional services related to telecommunications division's underwater fiber optic cable project with Hazel Bray Holding Limited.
We also missed five B two.
Oh, I did, yes. Exempted the procurement of annual maintenance services for the IPTV middleware system from competitive bidding quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Minerva Networks Incorporated.
Anybody want to speak to the items?
Actually, I apologize, I do have one quick question for the chief on the election of non-payee city designation.
Okay, Pete?
Because, you know, he came out of favor, Pete, we should ask him a question.
I thought it was good to ask.
Yeah. Okay, I understand the idea that this will on some level save us work and money to have the state do it. I guess my one question is, given, as most have watched, the budget for the court system has just get hammered in the last few years, is there a chance that they won't be able to provide as good a service on doing this for us? Because they're shutting down large chunks of the day, it seems like.
They are, they've gone to half days on Friday. I believe that this is kind of the trend statewide. One of the big parts of doing this is going to allow us possible access to grant funding. The big movement across the state is we have the mobile computers in our cars. These are strictly for issuing citations, traffic accident forms. In the future, hopefully, we can write reports and stuff, but right now, when we write a ticket, we use the computer, print it off, hand a copy to the violator, come back, print it off, send it over to finance, they hold it for days, thirty days, I believe. I don't, my numbers might be wrong. They hold it for a while, send it back to us, we mail out a letter, no response, we give it to the court. It goes through a default judgment period, they send it back to us. We go back to the city, and then we attempt to collect on it. Going to the non-payee city, we come in, as soon as the computer hits a wifi hotspot, it electronically sends the ticket to the courthouse, and it cuts out all the paper trail and all the fifteen different hands that have to touch it. And this is kind of the movement throughout the state that they're trying to go paperless and electronic for submitting stuff. And so, this is a huge step for us to, we're putting in for a grant for, I believe, about ninety-some odd thousand dollars for replacement of all the computers. This is like the main key point to getting this grant, they're really pushing hard for this.
Anybody else? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, follow the roll, please.
Please.
Yes.
Kuiper?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes. So then that brings us down to item seven three, ordinance number eighteen eighteen eighty-four, adding a new chapter nine point seven zero entitled- So what's that? Oh yeah, Trey, I forgot you. Come on up, let's get that done. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for moving me up on the agenda, greatly appreciated. I've got handouts of my PowerPoint for you guys to follow along, so you don't have to look behind you. Let me fire this up really quick. And I like to put this over on the overhead for folks watching, so they can
Hopefully follow along.
So, how do, what's the-
The power guy.
Yeah, what's the problem?
Oh yeah, there it goes.
You have no, you have no power, no.
Well, I guess rolling wall, that's hopefully warming up. Let me know if it doesn't start to-
Yeah, there's a light going on there.
Okay. Anyway, appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and you guys have a really full agenda. We have a lot going on at SEPA right now, but I'm going to keep tonight very brief. And let me straighten this up just a little. Great, and I always like to just start off with a couple of quick slides, just for people that might be listening or watching that aren't familiar with our organization. And I'll roll through these really quick, just a quick overview of SEPA. I'm not going to read through all these, you guys are very familiar with these, but for folks watching, you know, we're the local wholesale power provider for Ketchikan, Petersburg, and Ringel, we provide about sixty-two percent of the power for the interconnected system. And our organization is governed by municipal appointed directors, and many of which you folks up there have sat on my board. And we manage assets with a replacement value greater than about a half a billion dollars. And the nice thing about the agency is we were able to shift some of those long-term liability of those assets over to SEPA and relieve that off of the municipalities that we serve. We've, wholesale power rate's been six point eight cents stable for over twenty years. And last year, we rebated two point seven million dollars, which actually lowered that effective wholesale power rate to down about five cents. So, things are going very good, we make a lot of investment into the assets to ensure their reliability and availability for other member communities. And I'd like to throw this map up, just so people can visualize our system, and how we're all interconnected. The red line is the Swan Taiyi Intertai that was brought online in two thousand nine. And at that time, north and south projects, Taiyi and Swan were interconnected, as well as all the communities. One thing I'd just like to point out in the slide, and I do it every time, is one thing to remember is that there's only, there's less than twelve thousand meters on our entire system. So as we look forward and talk about new capital investment, perhaps a new hydro project or energy project of some sort, or transmission lines, or any of that larger CapEx investment, we have to spread that cost over those twelve thousand meters. So, topics for today, I'm going to talk about reservoir levels really quick, because I know everybody's concerned about that. I'm going to talk about the Swan Lake going in transition briefly, ballot measure number one, and the role of this rule advisory committee. So, as everybody knows, it's been a beautiful summer, I've enjoyed it. Unfortunately, our reservoirs have felt that as well. We're still above our low point for the year, and as you guys know, things have been extremely dry. I think, I read in the paper yesterday, we're still like fourteen inches of rain under normal. So, not a lot, but some. And also, so KPU's been also leaning on resources a little harder, because they're doing some maintenance on some of their units. So, those items combined have impacted lake levels. The way things are going right now, you can kind of see it's starting to flatten out a little bit, so if we can get one or two inches a week, help stabilize that, and the weather trend eventually will shift. Taiyi Lake, pretty much the same, big blue line, big dip, so we've got a lot of room to make up. And so, we watch the weather every single day, and at the office, and we also meet with all three member communities on a weekly basis, every Tuesday. Doesn't matter if it's Christmas, Thanksgiving, doesn't matter, we always meet every Tuesday. And that's the way we keep all the interconnected communities on the same page, and we talk about weather at that meeting as well. I'm not going to, I'm going to just mention a couple more things with regard to that. Any questions on lake levels? Right now, I'll just add a little bit that we have about forty-seven to forty-eight days combined between the two projects to serve loads, if loads don't change at all. And we get zero rain. So, as the rains come in, we'll start to build that backup, that reserve a little bit, but that kind of gives you a litmus on what we've got in the reservoirs.
Excuse me, Trey, what kind of rainfall would we need in order to start filling the reservoirs rather than just maintain it even?
So on that previous slide, you could see that it was just starting to change direction and level out, and I think we got, you know, a couple of inches of rain that made that happen. Things were really dry, so the first kind of flush of rain we get, it takes a while to get the ground resaturated, but then the water starts coming off pretty regularly as the rains come, so. So I'm going to move on, because I know you guys have a lot to do tonight. Ballot measure number one. This is, this is an issue I want to bring to folks' attention, and it's important. I've brought it to my board's attention a number of times and have provided talking points and ways for them to communicate with their constituent bases. And my fear has always been, when this makes it to the ballot, it's going to come out and say, "Do you want to save salmon, or do you want to kill salmon?" And the average voter's going to go, "Oh, we can save the salmon." But there is a lot of stuff embedded into all the wording that goes behind this measure. I can clearly say it will increase the cost of doing business. It'll cost more to develop new hydro projects. It'll cost more to re-license our existing projects. The permitting and access to electrical infrastructure, such as our transmission lines, will be more costly. The measure adds another level of bureaucracy on top of our existing Federal Energy Regulatory Commission process. That's a very robust process. And I'll emphasize, it is really harmful to our marine-based communities, so southeast will be drastically impacted. And I'm just speaking from energy perspective, but you can easily segue that into all the municipalities that are in southeast or across Alaska. And I think you'll hear some of the talking, on some of the advertisements for the various sides and such, and the argument that it's big oil and mining that are the opposition for this ballot measure. They're part of it, but if you go look at the list, it's long, and it covers every corner of the state, small businesses, large businesses, municipalities, individuals. It's statewide. So, please encourage your constituents to learn more about what they vote on, so they understand the full effects. Next item, roadless rule advisory committee. Today, Governor Bill Walker signed and issued an administrative order 299, establishing the roadless, Alaska Roadless Rule Citizens Advisory Committee, and creating an opportunity for southeast Alaskans to advise the state of Alaska on future management of inventoried roadless areas in the Tongass National Forest. For those of you that are follow SEPA, we've been involved in this roadless rule issue for many, many years. We filed amicus meris with the state's lawsuit at the state level, and then at the federal level. I spoke at it on this issue multiple times, and have also issued a white paper to Senator Murkowski's office at their request, supporting their efforts with data regarding the cost, potential impacts to energy development in the Tongass. I've also had the opportunity to work up in the Chugatch as well, which is also roadless. So, this is an opportunity for, as you guys know, this has been going on for well over a decade now. It was on again, off again, exemptions, partial, and challenges. And so, now, this latest drive is to create this advisory committee. It'll be up to 13 voting members. It's a very diverse group, from Alaska native corporations, and mining interests, and tourists, and fishing industries. These are all named in the MOU. And the USDA is beginning an environmental impact statement, an EIS process and public rulemaking process to develop a state-specific roadless rule that establishes a land classification system designed to conserve roadless area characteristics in the Tongass National Forest while accommodating road construction. I won't read the whole thing, but those are the key points. It's going to be a state-specific effort to come up with solutions, so we can still recognize the intent of the roadless, but at the same time, do economic development and opportunities within the Tongass, because the Tongass is our backyard. So, as part of this, the advisory committee deliverables, the committee will present an initial report to the governor and state forester no later than November 30, 2018. So, this is a fast-track project, and that's one of the reasons why I'm before you today. The report may include up to three options for a state-specific roadless rule for possible inclusion into the National Environmental Policy Act. A lot of people know that, is NEPA. And what I would like, or what I'm requesting, is the council's consideration to provide a letter of support for me to serve on that committee. I've already got a commitment from the Alaska Power Association for a letter of recommendation, and from Petersburg and Rainville as well, and Southeast Conference. So, I think it's, this is an important opportunity for us to have a voice in the development. These things directly affect economic development throughout the Tongass. And in fact, when the MOU came out, it didn't even specifically, it called out all these other industries except energy. So, we rallied a bunch of folks behind the scene, and if you notice now, in this particular administrative order, it does specifically call out an energy seat. So, that's a great advancement, and I'd sure appreciate your support to be able to participate further. I've been involved in it for many years now, and I'm familiar with all the issues and the history, and hopefully, make some fruitful change that benefits everybody throughout the Tongass. And that's it.
All right.
Short and sweet. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
Greatly appreciate it. Any questions on any of the topics?
Yeah, anybody have any questions, Craig? So, on that subject, the last part of it, I did provide a lay on the table, which has an example of a support letter to send off, and if there's four hands, I'd like to direct staff to go ahead and do the wordsmithing they need to get to the store, because there is a timeline in regards to this, if you're not...
Yes, we, so, since, as soon as the administrative order is signed, we have seven days for me to put in my full application, which would include all the letters of recommendation as well.
So, in regards to the support letter, other recommendations, any questions?
Nope.
So, do I have him?
Yeah, you had seven minutes, but you weren't noticing.
Thank you. I wasn't noticing, right? All right, thank you.
So, one other thing I'll just add, I encourage folks, if you ever have any questions about SEPA, what we're doing, our finances, what our projects are doing, what the lake levels are doing, most of that information's on our website already, but pick up the phone and call us. My number is right, my cell number's right on our website. You can call me. I put it on every presentation I do. Call me, rather than hearing speculation out in the community. I'm more than happy to sit down with folks and explain all the issues that they're interested in, so, thank you for the opportunity.
You want to push the power button, Craig? Thank you.
Well, as Bob will be blinded for you.
Linking up.
Freebie comes near.
All right, we do one more, yes.
Uh, it should be okay. It takes a minute.
Wrong, yes, press button. There you go. Thank you.
One of those.
All right, so, moving on. 7A3 is ordinance number 181884, adding a new chapter 9.70 entitled "Bird Feeding Nuisance" to the Catch Camp Municipal Code and establishing effective date. I have a motion.
Your Honor, I move the city council approve in first reading ordinance number 181884, adding a new chapter 9.70 entitled "Bird Feeding Nuisance" to the Catch Camp Municipal Code and establishing an effective date.
Second, moving second, it's Judy.
I just want to thank Mitch for the work he did on the ordinance, and that's what we asked for. I think he did a good job.
Anybody else? Yes?
I'm not going to be supporting this. I hate the idea that a company is actually feeding the eagles for profit, but I'm not going to support a law against it. I, there's too many, there's things that Martha brought up that I'm against, there's, there's a lot of, I don't think that's where we need to put our law enforcement. That's it.
That's it? So, Mitch?
Yeah?
So, some of the comments that were made in, tonight, in public catch, is in regards to, say, like Wolf Point, or other public areas, where somebody is, you know, like to talk about the ball fields, I mean, I don't think that we're out to issue tickets to kids for throwing french fries on the ground, but how did that all work out?
How did... Well, I think you're dealing with two things there. Kids are not held responsible for violations, not violations like this, or criminal actions, even if they created a problem, they would be dealt with by juvenile probation. But you've got to be of a certain age, and the feeding is intentional to even form that intent. And as far as the property owner, what was meant, and, you know, maybe it needs to be clarified, but to allow us to permit something to go on, to permit that nuisance to go on, the city would not be permitting it if this were passed, they would be outlawing it. I think we could change it to permit, or knowingly permit, if people are somehow confused by that, but it's like, you know, somebody finds your diary and reads it, versus, can I read your diary and say, "Sure, go ahead"? There's a difference between those two on those items that were brought up. I hope that answers what you're asking.
It is to that extent. The other thing I have is, in my mind, is the actual feeding of the bird is, you know, a lot of people don't like that, and I get that, same with crows and signals and stuff. But it's like, you know, everybody has a right to own a dog. But when that dog moves in next door and barks all night long, and then it becomes a nuisance, and that's when you enforce the nuisance law. And I'm not sure that this reads that way. In other words, it just bans it altogether, says you can't own a dog, because it might bark. And to me, that's what we're doing here, is we're saying you can't feed eagles, because every time, or not just eagles, the crows and everything else, because it's going to become a nuisance. Not all of those are going to become nuisance. And I agree with Dick, you know, I was, I was taught that you don't feed wild animals because you, of all different types of reasons. But I'm still back to the fact that it's when it becomes a nuisance when you have, and clearly, in the case that we have now down there, at the tourist process, and with the cabs coming up, and the fact that it's impacting private property, it would be considered a nuisance, and I think then the ordinance comes into play. But, you know, there's a lot of things that happen, you're out camping, or you're out on a lake, or whatever, you're feeding an animal, you know how it goes, but they may not be a problem, and I would hate to see an overzealous person end up with a ticket in regards to that. So, that's just where I'm at, and I think that when there is a nuisance, I think that it should be taken care of, and I think that's what should trigger it.
Where does this fall in line with the federal law, which I looked up, was that when you're interfering with an animal to the extent that it becomes a danger to the animal, or to individuals, or, again, property? But I know in the federal law, and I know the borough has regulations and rules at Herring Cove, that you're not allowed to interfere with the animal, and that includes feeding. So, why is it, I mean, how is that not the same as what we're doing here? Is we're not interfering with a wild animal, we're putting it in danger within the city limits. You have vehicles coming and going, buses, you've got buildings, and when they feed, they're like, I don't know, they're crazy.
I would just offer that your thoughts and those of the vice mayor probably fall more into the realm of the policy issues that this council needs to wrestle with and measure. I would point out, there is an action that the person that's harmed by a nuisance can bring as a private action. I think it could be more involved if the city was going to undertake some responsibility in that place, because it's going to involve, I think, a different level of proof, of comparing the usages, the histories of the usages, the effects, in trying to stop something as a nuisance in that regard, versus just a simple ban, although, you know, I recognize that a simple ban may strike somebody as...
Person.
You know, farther than they think it ought to go, but that's really all I can offer on that.
I just, I was taught the same thing, you know, feed wild animals, and look at our bears. I mean, it's the same.
Yes, I think when we look at this, however it ends up being worded that this comes to be, I think the first thing we need to look at is public safety. Now, at a previous meeting, we had the state biologist talk about airplane safety. We got an email from, I believe, the director of operations for PAC Air, and we have this letter that we got this week from the C-Pilot. I sent out an email asking for responses from all the air taxi carriers, and quite frankly, I didn't get much in response. I wanted to know what their concerns were. But I don't think we, I think we need to not lose sight of the fact that public safety should be first and foremost when we're considering this, regardless of how the folks at Sour Dough Tours want to present this, and their staff, and they talk about their myriad objections, let's not forget, this is banging them in the pocketbook, and they didn't want to say that, and there's nothing wrong with saying that, so I'll say it for them. Okay? They came here to protect their own financial interests, and that's a completely honorable But it's also undeniable that if we allow this to happen, not just from these folks, but from anybody else, we're habituating wild animals. We're turning it into pets. And I'm not really sure what part of the Alaskan experience that is, when we turn eagles into puppies and throw them treats.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question. Can I make a comment?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Hi, excuse me. Okay, guys, so once again, since this ordinance seems like it's directed towards us Sour Dough Tours and our property, can we put a fish cleaning station right there? And would that be a nuisance? Because we're at the harbor, we have water rights, and why don't we just have a fish cleaning station? Would that solve everybody's problems? Because once you put an ordinance, it's not just against us, it's against all of your people. You can't direct something towards us. I mean, if not, just give me a ticket, I will go to the courthouse, and we'll fight it in court, because it's directed at us. And I understand a nuisance, but we're at a harbor, the flight path, if your plane goes towards a building, you're not going to be, we're so far away, you're going to hit that building. That's more of a problem. I mean, you guys can think and do what you want, but I think it's going to open a can of worms. We can, you know, or why don't we get roosters there? I mean, it's, right now, it's a conflict between neighbors that are going to cause everybody, and the kids, and the city, and you feed the, feed your french fries, adults, kids, at that Wolf Point to somebody, there's going to be a police officer handing you a $500 ticket, just because of an ordinance. We're not here to hurt the animals. We're here to educate. Of course, that building, and the price, and the taxes that we pay on that, we need to generate revenue. I mean, if you want us to have marijuana shop in there, whatever, you know, what is it? People are in business to make money. You guys, some of you are business people, and I'm here to protect myself and the cities, the people of Catch Camp, because if this ordinance is directed directly towards Sour Dough Tours, then name it Sour Dough Tours, and give us the ticket. You're going to, you know, you can't bid an ordinance and aim it at one individual. We can, you know, or why don't we get roosters there? I mean, it, it's, right now, it's a conflict between neighbors that are going to cause everybody and the kids and the city. And, and, and you feed the, feed your french fries, adults, kids at that Wolf Point to somebody, there's going to be a police officer handing you a $500 ticket just because of an ordinance. We're not here to hurt the animals. We're here to educate. Of course, that building and the, and the price and the taxes that we pay on that, we need to generate revenue. I mean, if you want us to have marijuana shop in there, whatever, you know, what is it? People are in business to make money. You guys, some of you are business people. And I'm here to protect myself and, and the cities, the, the people of Ketchikan. Because if this ordinance is directed directly towards Sour Dough Tours, then name it Sour Dough Tours and give us the ticket. You're gonna, you know, you can't bid an ordinance and aim it at one individual. So, I thank you again. And like I said, we can have a fish processing plant or something. You know, there's processors that are cleaning fish. What's the difference? Bar Harbor, you go throw your salmon guts out or whatever, you know? You're feeding the eagles. So you guys need to really honestly think about this. If not, like I said, I can get a ticket right now, I can take it to court and we can figure it out if there are laws. And you guys are trying to make laws. So I thank you and I appreciate what you guys do. And I'm, I wish to God I didn't have to be here fighting for my own rights. Thank you.
So, again, how does that affect fish stations? We have them in our harbors. And I know that most of the time of the debris is sinking and the eagles are feeding on it. But, um, is there, what, are there any ramifications in regard to that that we can, I guess, more care?
Is that directed?
Directly, Carl, yeah.
You know, from a layperson's perspective, uh, I think, I think there is a difference. What we're talking about is disposal of debris at a station that goes into the water. You're not actively throwing that debris out to attract, uh, wildlife. You know, this, this is, and I'll defer to the attorney, but, well, I'll defer to the attorney.
I, I would say that isn't the intentional feeding of wildlife. I mean, we, 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 we know what we're talking about, intentionally feeding the wildlife. If there's an incidental, uh, you know, if, if fish is in, in the water for some other legitimate purpose and the birds are eating it, that wouldn't be covered by this ordinance.
Thank you for that. I had a constituent call me today and ask that specifically so I wanted to make sure that it was addressed.
Or, you know, if, if, I mean, I, to me, to me, that's, that's pretty clear. But I know lawyers don't think like normal people. If you want it, have it to come back that, you know, it doesn't apply to such incidental feeding that may occur in, in respect to a fish cleaning station, we can cer- certainly do that or you can absolutely do that.
So it's really hard to prove intention? They could just say they're feeding the pigeons.
Well.
They're feeding those fish to the pigeons and we don't mention pigeons.
We can mention pigeons. We can mention pigeons.
Then they can say they're feeding something else. And intention is hard to prove.
Like I could say, you've got, you've got policy decisions that I, that I don't envy you. You know, as, as, as much as we can improve it or reflect your direction in a different or better way, we can do that.
Okay. Feeding is feeding, whatever you do. If you're cleaning, if you're doing a fish cleaning station in the water, it's going in the water, it's not feeding, feeding the fish. And clearly, there's been a nuisance created here by intentional feeding. And I, I admire the, the company that caused the issue for being creative about what they did. But we cannot have this happen all over town. And I think it's been said, it's been talked about safety, been talked about not feeding the wildlife. And I, and I hate to affect one company, but we'll have this everywhere. And the issue, nuisance is the issue. Somebody dropping a fish in a backyard is not going to become a nuisance unless they do it every day, every day, every hour. And, and so I think we just, we're going to have to pass this. And if there's some issues in there, we may have to tweak it in the end, but it's, this cannot continue.
Just one more thing. Even a person who places a fish in their backyard with the intention of seeing an eagle swoop down and get it, that's...
Nuisance is the issue.
No, it's with the intention of feeding an eagle. That's the law, that's the ordinance.
So, Mark?
I haven't been able to wrap my head around the analogy between directly feeding eagles, wild animals, and indirect activities that cause the disposal of fish waste, like fish cleaning stations or seafood processors. Those two things are so far apart, it really defies description, at least to me. If we want to go down that road, then we can extrapolate that out to the end that we're all guilty because we're all throwing stuff in the landfill and you're probably going to see an eagle or two up there. So why don't we all just find ourselves? That's how silly, I think, that part of this argument becomes. One other thing, when this first came to us and we were having a discussion about this and this was brought to our attention, that this was a dispute between neighbors. Let's be real clear on something. It was a dispute between neighbors until people brought it to the city council. I'm not aware of any of us that went out and solicited this topic for discussion. But once it lands here, then we've got a job, we've got a job to do. There's probably no opportunity in this ordinance or most that are already on the books for perfect wording. But maybe we just need to start somewhere.
Anybody else? See you in a while, please, Carl.
So can I just clarify? So this is the first reading, right?
Yes. It will come back again. It will come back again.
Yeah.
We'll come back again.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
No.
Flora?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes. We're about to get sent there.
Are you there?
Yeah.
Right front.
Yes. Yes, I'm present. Should I go up present?
I think you need to move him over here because no one sees him anymore.
Oh, I, I heard, I was from the desk. People see you just fine.
Your opinion matters.
Six to one? Okay, so moving forward, that brings us to item five, professional consulting services for port development and reconfiguration review, Romelo, Ahmel and Partners Incorporated. We have a motion.
Hey, your honor.
Yes, Dick.
It's rather long again, but, um... I moved the city council off throughout the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services between the city of Ketchikan and, per Birmingham, Lake Oto or whatever it is, Amagel and Partners, et cetera, at the cost of not to exceed $113,360 for professional services related to the review of the port development and reconfiguration financing options authorized and authorize a budget transfer in amount of $113,360 from appropriated reserves of the port enterprise fund to the port department 2018 berth one and two expansion capital account. Prove the funding in amount of third time or fourth time, $113,0360. From the port department, uh, 2018 berth one and two, uh, expansion cap account and direct to city manager to execute the contract on behalf of city council.
Second.
Then we have a second, Dick. Dick, do you have any?
He's a blow.
No, we know, we need to get it done and we've got to have some advice from professionals.
Carl, do you have anything for us on action on that?
No, I don't, Mr. Mayor.
Would you please, uh, give us the correct pronunciation there?
You mean I didn't do a good job?
It is Romelo Ahamel and Partners.
No, okay. Thank you, partner. We're going to be working. So, uh, that is, Carl, do you have a rule?
Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuyper?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us down to item seven, offer of employment, garage division supervisor. We have a motion.
I knew the city council authorized the city manager to offer the position of garage division supervisor to Steve Langley of Ketchikan Alaska based upon a compensation level of grade seven dash five eight, step Q, which provides an annual salary of level seventy-two thousand six hundred eighty-two.
Second, I have a second. Moving second. Stanley?
It's pretty explanatory. Explainatory.
Anybody else?
Yeah, your honor.
Go ahead, Mark.
I had some people come and talk to me and I'm not even sure what I should or am allowed to discuss here when it comes to personnel matters. Pardon me. Let me make one comment in, in reference, in reference to this is I find it odd that we have built-in pay scales that would create this scenario where we have to take exception to hire managers so that they can be paid more than the people they're supervising. That, that seems odd to me. So I'm, I'm guessing that if without this activity, this person would go in at level A and be at a subordinate salary to the people that he's in charge of in that, in that department. That seems to me that at least in the future, there needs to be some sort of consideration of a structural change. Beyond that, there's some things that came to my attention or comments that were made to me, that I don't think I can properly address here. Just to... So I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure, uh, where to go with this.
Bob?
Mr. Mayor, I, I could try to respond to a couple of council member Flora's comments. Relative to the structure of the pay plan, uh, from my perspective, it's like a number of features in the code that developed over the years. We can't transfer something into travel and training without council approval. And I think it grew out of, uh, somewhere down the line, somebody in management was abusing that particular account and the council wanted oversight. It's same with vehicles and moving equipment. If we have excess funds in that account, uh, I, I can't spend those without council approval because at some point, that practice was abused and the council put in specific limitations in the code. And, uh, in fact, council member Seaverton and I were discussing this issue in another context. When I have vacancies available at one point in time, if I wanted to promote an internal candidate, I could offer that candidate no more than a five, a four percent raise. That because of council interpretation of the comp plan. Whereas if it were an external candidate, I could go all the way up to step K without, uh, council approval. And, and that was the inequity that recently the coun- the council changed. And, and now I can give equal consideration to internal candidates. Relative to issues, uh, council member Flora about, uh, any of the applicants under consideration. If you want to have a one-on-one discussion with me, I, I can try to answer, uh, based on what I know. But relative to the council wanting to have that discussion collectively, if you were going to try to do that in executive session, I think attorney Seaver would indicate that if you wanted to discuss a specific applicant, you're going to have to get that applicant's approval to have that discussion in executive session relative to damaging, uh, character and reputation. What I can tell you based on my discussions with, uh, the public works director and the HR manager, as council member Flora alluded to, the actual compensation being offered is to ensure that, uh, the supervisor will be earning more than any of the people he supervised, would supervise. And, and that's how that, that dollar figure, uh, was awarded. Relative to the selection of, 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 of the candidate, uh, Mr. Hilson has indicated to me that based on, you know, his professional experience, uh, this is the best person we have. We did interview an internal candidate that has a lot of qualifications going for him in, in the context of what he can bring to future opportunities in the public works department. But in terms of the mechanic supervisor position, uh, who we are recommending had a, had a much stronger established skill set. And that's about as far as I'm willing to go relative to that discussion. This, this is our best collective recommendation. You know, what the council chooses to do with it, you know, is ultimately, uh, your call. I don't know how you can collectively have a, have a discussion about any individual concerns that one or more of you may have, uh, without going through a process where you get the consent to talk about whoever it is you want to talk about. So...
Mark?
When Mr. Emmalon has time, I'd be more than willing just to speak one-on-one with him if he's okay with that. I'm not looking for another executive session.
And to be clear, what we're here tonight do is to approve, uh, Carl's option to offer, uh, to step Q. Uh, there's of course the power to hire fire stand management officers. Yes, Dick?
Yeah, individual aside, I don't know the man, it doesn't matter because you made the selection. But the process, you're saying that we need to do this because this position needs to be, uh, paid more than the highest, I'm going to assume the highest paid employee.
Mechanic.
Huh?
The mechanic from the shop.
The mechanic in the shop. So, I guess, I'm trying to figure out, did the old, did the pre, the peo- the person that retired, was he making more than mechanic in the shop?
I'll have to defer to the public works director.
And if so, it would appear, I'm going to, in one way, that that's probably the reasonable salary for a new supervisor. But I'm not, I'm not too sure whether this all makes sense, but, uh, yeah.
Yes, uh, the previous supervisor was making more and was making more than this offer to the proposed supervisor.
Okay. Anybody else? Judy?
I guess for me, um, you know, once it comes to us, I feel that our steps are just, there's something amiss here. When our people that are working for us aren't comfortable applying for the job because they don't feel that they're going to be given consideration or they're going to not make as much money, um, I really think our whole compensation package, we really need to look at that. And we just keep, I feel, um, you know, we're asked here to approve this and, I mean, I get that it's not our job to micromanage what you do. But when this comes here and we're asked to give more money because you don't have the authority, I don't know what the heck I'm giving more money for. I look at a resume and I feel that there should be some, it should make sense to me why I'm giving this. And it just doesn't. And that's why I, I mean, I just felt I needed more information. And I know the questions that I asked were not, um, maybe received very well. Maybe I wasn't, you know, very clear, but I just, I don't understand how this works and I don't feel I'm getting any better at understanding how it works.
Based on the question you just asked about concerns that have been conveyed to you by what I perceive potentially coming from internal candidates and why they would be getting potentially less, based on my review relative to the concerns that I've gotten since returning, what may have been conveyed just isn't the fact. As I said, before the last change to the compensation plan, if I wanted to promote a mechanic or a street tech to this position, previous council interpretation of the compensation plan said I can offer that person no more than a four percent raise. Now, I could have, under the rules in existence at that time, had gone out and brought someone from outside the employment, or outside the city, a non-city employee, and offered that person a lot more up to step K without any council authority. I had that right. So internal candidates were being, in my opinion... So internal candidates were being, in my opinion, discriminated against relative to promotional opportunities. And the last time we had an update of the comp plan, we raised that issue with the council. And that issue has now been corrected. On an internal promotion, instead of being limited to four percent, I can now offer up to step K, just like I could with an external candidate. So I don't know what's being said, I'm not privy to the conversations that are going on. But if it's being inferred that internal candidates are not capable of getting the same type of consideration, if the credentials are equal, all things being said, that's just not true, okay? That, that, that's not the way it works, that's not the change we brought forward to the council. And internal candidates now on promotional opportunities, if they have the credentials, are eligible just as much, and, and it wouldn't make any sense because no internal candidate is going to want to take a promotion and then earn less than the people he's supervising. And, and I wouldn't ask anybody to do that. Perfect example tonight of that on, on your agenda is what we're proposing with the assistant water division manager. And, you know, that's not the way I work and, you know, we've given you our recommendation, it, the ball's in your court and, and, and we'll, we'll accept whatever decision the council wants to make.
Thank you, Carl. And, you know, one of the issues in regards to what we're talking about overall is the, the uh, ability to uh, have succession planning. And one of the stumbling blocks in regards to bringing a person out of school, an employee, into a manager's position is the fact that he has to change retirements and usually takes a, a significant loss in that, in that process. You come out of per- out of IBW retirement and go into a purged tier four retirement. And at some point, somehow, we have to figure out how to fix that because we have competent people working for the, the city of Ketchikan that can be trained and move into management positions later on. But again, we have that block case. It may not relate to this particular fact and it may because the person may have applied for it if we had a way to give them their retirement.
So do they?
But I, I think we need to continue with that conversation.
So do they just lose their IBEW completely?
They come out and, oh, they still have it, but then they stop crewing.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
And, and IBW retirement is by far better than the tier four state retirement.
Yeah.
And so they take a loss, especially if they have long-term commitment. So anyway, we have the, the offer before us. There's no further discussion, please call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
Yeah.
Kuss?
Yes.
Kuyfer?
Yes.
Flora?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
That passes uh, six to one. Brings us down to uh, item seven A eight, award of contract number eighteen seventeen, Chatham Avenue Storm Drain Improvement BAM LLC. Do I have a motion?
Oops.
I move the city council accept the bid of BAM LLC in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand sixty dollars for contract number eighteen seventeen, Chatham Avenue Storm Drain Improvement. Establish a ten percent contingency in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and six, bringing the total project cost to two hundred and twenty eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-six. Authorized budget transfers in the amount of fifty thousand for the Streets Division's two thousand seventeen Sea Level Drive Reconstruction Project Capital Account and eighty-five thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-five cents from the appropriated reserves of the Public Works Sales Tax Fund to the Streets Division two thousand eighteen Storm Water Facilities Reconstruction and Repair Capital Account. And direct the city manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city council.
Second.
It's been second, here's your second. Janley?
Oh, it, it's, it's pretty clear, I mean, I have not, no issues with what they're working on, so.
Yes, Judy?
I guess I'm wondering how it went from a hundred and fifty thousand um, up to two hundred and twenty thousand. Like it seems to have gone up considerably.
So that a hundred and fifty thousand budget item was generally for stormwater improvements. Uh, it wasn't specifically tied to just Chatham. So there was some funds from that, um, expended in other, other projects. And we were also contemplating for a time doing this project in-house. Due to the large pump size and the amount of bypass pumping that was going to be involved, we, we opted to design it in-house and then bid it out.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Dana? Call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuyfer?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Severson?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yep.
Isom?
Yes.
That passes seven nothing, brings us down to item seven A nine, award of contract eighteen dash twenty-two, Totem Heritage Center ADA Restroom Construction Dawson Construction. So I have a motion.
Your honor?
Yes, Judy?
I move the city council accept the bid of Dawson Construction in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand for contract number eighteen dash twenty-two, Totem Heritage ADA Restroom Construction. Establish a fifteen percent con- contingency in the amount of twenty-five thousand three hundred and fifty, bringing the total project cost to a hundred and ninety-four thousand three hundred and fifty. Approved funding in the amount of a hundred and ninety-four thousand three hundred and fifty from the two thousand eighteen Museum Department Totem Heritage Center Restrooms ADA Upgrade Capital Account. And direct the city manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city council.
It's been moved and seconded. Judy, do you have anything?
Um, just I want to thank Mr. Hilson for explaining this to me and also you because I looked at this and also thought, how did it go from a hundred and four to a hundred and ninety-four? And uh, as I understand it, there was, it became a lot more complicated than originally planned.
Carl?
Yeah, just one comment, um, Mr. Mayor, we will have to bring back budget amendment potentially to, to make up the shortfall in funding. My recommendation consistent with what we have done in the past on something like this would be a split fifty-fifty between CPV and uh, either Public Works Sales Tax or Community Facility Development Funds. You know, if the council wants to go one way or the other, uh, on how that money's apportioned, you know, we're, we're fine with that, we're not worried to anyone's source, so. If you wanted to make up the difference, uh, fully out of CPV, that, that, that's fine as well. Uh, we'll, we'll take whatever direction council wants to give.
Yeah.
Yeah, my question dealt with the CBP funds. I was thinking when we did the budget, we took the CBP funds away from these off-dock projects and, and it's showing in Mark's letter, no, Chet who goes later, that is still funded from CBP and I thought we pulled it away for a specific reason.
Council member Cruz, I recall having that discussion, uh. I don't know if the council specifically said we were going to pull all CPV back from these type of projects and direct it to the port. If, if that's something that the council wants to do, I mean, I'm not going to object to that.
Yeah, is it, is, the question is, is it good policy to pull it back away from the docks? That's all I'm saying.
No, we've consistently said, and, and Mr. Corpron has advocated for this, the farther you get away from the docks, the, the more precarious your arguments become in terms of someone questioning. In the case of the Centennial Building renovations, the borough funded the restroom renovations and they used their CPV funds for that, so.
I was just going to add, I, I think it was my understanding that it was done on a project basis. We would decide the project and whether or not we wanted to fund any portion of it from CPV money. But all the CPV money right now at the county board and separate funds from the board, and if the council makes dirty surgery, we move the money out of that fund into the board or into another capital project fund, depending on what the council decides.
So if the council wants to give direction, we're sitting.
So for me, Carl, it's like in for a little, in for a lot. If we can justify the fact, and I think we can because we can show that the majority of the use of that particular facility is from cruise passengers, that I would assume use CPV money because I think they're more limited to that type of operation. We have a better opportunity to use our sales tax money on other projects. We have more of a, 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 a.
That's forehand's direction of the council.
I, I, I would direct that we probably use CPV money if, if we see it appropriate. One, two, three, I think I have four.
I think, I still think we need to be careful. We know, we know, we know, we know where it needs to go and, and we're s- going to continue a precedent that might bite us. And we know with the, but the borough putting a lot of money way off and we're going to get bit, so.
Janley?
I would think it would fall into the fa- um, the infrastructure piece of having bathrooms available to the number of people we have coming in and ma- having them accessible with the number of people coming off the ship with, uh, the need.
Well, I, I think Dick is correct in the fact that being that it's still a lawsuit pending in Juneau, that we have to be very careful about how we expend those funds and make sure that we can justify doing so. Uh, in this particular case, um, and they always said it's the benefit of the ship and not necessarily the benefit of the passengers.
Yes.
So it's a fine kind of a line that we, that we draw there. Uh, but if we were going to use a portion of it, um, I don't think the amount matters with the project, I think that's what qualifies. Dave?
Given, given the hard line that they have taken, um, in their suit against Juneau, I think it behooves us to not spend the money away from the docks for now. I'm assuming as most people are that Juneau's going to win that suit. If Juneau does, then it's open season. If Juneau loses, they could come back and say, look, you spent it on, once again. And yeah, I, I think we all agree bathrooms are cruise related in the same way that we all agree the crossing guards are cruise related. But that's not the, that's not the position the industry's taking. Now, if they, if they, if they win, then we're, then we have, we have to go back and re-justify it, so. Given the fact we're, w- once again, not talking about like a huge amount of money here, I guess I'd rather see us funded elsewhere just for now and then worry about, worry in a few months when that decision's made and see, see where it goes. But anyway, that's the, that's why, e- even though I agree, it's why, that's why I didn't, didn't give you the fourth round.
I appreciate that. And Carl, we have an opportunity to reach out to the cruise industry and, and talk to them about these types of investments, don't we?
We do, Mr. Mayor, um. I think the bigger discussions with industry right now are going to be on the board itself and, and where we're going. And hopefully, uh, with the action taken by the council tonight, we'll, we'll get that process underway. So uh, my direction, as I understand it, is we'll, we'll bring them back the difference and fund that out of CPV and uh, we'll have that at the next, next meeting.
Thank you. Uh, so we'll use the roll call. Next question, call the roll.
Kuss?
Yes.
Kuyfer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes. That's it, thank you. Move on to, um, now item seven B one, offer employment assistant water division manager.
Your honor?
Yes.
I move the city council authorize the general manager to offer the position of assistant water division manager to Seth Brackey of Ketchikan, Alaska, based upon the retention of the present compensation level of grade seven dash seventy-five step U, which provides an annual salary level of a hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty cents, pending a further review of the assistant water division manager's compensation grade of seven dash seventy-two.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Judy?
Uh, I just, congratulations to Seth. I really like it when we provide opportunities for our people to move up and I think that you've earned it and thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuyfer?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes. So that will bring us to item uh, seven B two. And Carl, was there a request to move that into executive session before we take action on it?
That, that's a kind of discretion.
Okay. So, seven A two, um, do I have a motion?
Is there a motion?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, where is it?
Your honor, I move the city council to approve the memorandum agreement between the city of Ketchikan, Doing Businesses of Ketchikan Public Utilities and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local fifteen forty-seven, providing for an eight dollar and fifty cents hourly premium incentive to the electric division journeymen, metermen, and wiremen, electrician positions, and direct the general manager to execute the memorandum of understanding on behalf, I'm sorry, agreement on behalf of Ketch, of the city council.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Dave?
You know, I, I, I get that we all kind of think this is a good idea, but on the other hand, boy, I think, I think we're, some of the things that were said tonight at the podium, you know, point out that, you know, we're just sliding farther down that slope and we're kind of doing it piecemeal, I'm not sure. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking against this.
Okay, yeah. Anybody else? Well, you know, we're in kind of a situation where, um, you know, no one good cheat gets rebuttal to it, but um, it's out of no disrespect to any other city employee that, that have been doing this and I think it's, you know, um, our intent here is to retain some of the harder positions that we have to fill. And I understand there's a bunch of them out there, but um, you know, the economy down south is such and, and in other areas of the state that they're paying higher for the, uh, of course, the linemen and, um, there were acting linemen that were, uh, proposing to probably, uh, move on to those and we're hoping to be able to retain those because we do have a good line through right now as we do with all of our city employees and I'm pleased with their abilities and their, their efforts. And uh, earlier this year, we had a longer conversation with the media department and the electricians. Uh, there was a fact that they've been below grade for a number of years also and um, there were a number of them that were at a point where they could retire out and we had no apprenticeship or succession planning in regards to bringing new people in and with the compensation tactic, we would probably have a, a real issue with that. And it doesn't matter, if, I mean, if you're in a wastewater division, it takes electricity to make those come front. If you're in a telephone division, you need power. If you're at home, you need power. And so power is a real critical, um, part of our, our infrastructure. Not to say that others aren't. If your garbage isn't picked up every week, you'd know about it in a quick hurry. But we're doing the best we can right now to move forward and I think that the larger problem is, is a, is going to be a, um, a phased issue because we do not have the, the capital at hand to, to make all the, the raises that we think are necessary in, in a short term. Our population hasn't grown and our costs have. And these are all related to either rates or taxes when we make these investments from our, from our employees. And so I would hope that through the, the process, we're going to do a compensation study. Yeah, we could use the one that we had before, but it's probably still below market value now uh, as the years have gone by. And so I would like to have more current numbers and then, you know, working through the council, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to fund it and how we're going to face it. So that's kind of where I'm at with this.
For those of us that weren't here. For those of us that weren't here, could we see that old compensation plan? Or was it?
What's that?
The old compensation plans.
Two thousand fourteen.
The original, yeah.
The original compensation plan had another component to it also. We had a contractor come to town, he sat down with the employees and stuff, they rewrote the job descriptions that fit the actual job they were doing and then with that, they had a better opportunity to compare them nationally to, to what those wages were. And so they bought back both of those components and we did implement part of the compensation, but again, it has to be a phased issue, past councils, so as not to continue down that line. And so we've got to a point where we're behind, behind eight ball again, but I think that we need to make sure that we're using current information and, and make a commitment to, to figure out how we move forward with this. Mark.
The way this process has unfolded, I have a couple of concerns, and again, not to say that these folks aren't worth their bump. We had a room full of people who made it pretty clear that the way this process is unfolding is exactly the kind of thing that kills morale and drives wedges between people. I also don't know how we're gonna pay for this. This conversation will revisit us the next time we're talking about raising rates, remember this meeting, because this is a relevant ingredient to the next time we have to do that. Are we gonna raise a tax? Are we gonna raise a, a utility rate? How are we gonna do this? But honestly, when I saw the letter that the folks signed that petition, I think they're right. I don't know how we fund this, I don't know how we fund more, but honestly, I think, I think those folks are right.
Janeway.
I think this is, I mean, when you have people unable to, when you have to have a roommate because you can't afford to pay for, and, and that's across the board, that's the, everyone in town, you're seeing more and more three generations living together because mom can't afford to live by herself, kids are living with them, I mean, and I, unfortunately, I think this is just another piece of that puzzle that's coming into play that our own city and borough employees are unable to afford to live here. However, the other, the other ball in that is that you have, you inject the money into their, into their salaries and that does boost the economy because now they're able to pay for those other, those other things within the community. I think they're right too. I, I get it, so.
Well, one of the things that we have to also conserve ourselves with is we presently have a major employer in town doing layoffs. That could equate to as much as ten million dollars a year in money spent. And I talked to a landlord today that he had two people had given him notice that were bigger employees that they're, they're moving. So the economy, you know, again, the amount of money that we're gonna have to do this, it's gonna be difficult, but I think that it's an endeavor that we have to just keep moving forward incrementally.
Not to make light of the bigger situation, but perhaps there's some qualified folks that can fill some of these open city positions.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Anything else? Time to call, please call.
Gage.
Yes.
Siggy.
Yes.
Seaverton.
Yes.
Kuz.
Here.
Kuyfer.
Yes.
Flora.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
All right, so that brings us down now to vouchers. Ketchikan Daily News, sixty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents.
Move that we approve vouchers in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents.
Seven.
Been moving second, Jenny.
Kuz.
Yes.
Kuyfer.
Yes.
Flora.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Siggy.
Yes.
Seaverton.
Yes. Brings us down to item nine, manage report, Carl, what do you have for us?
Got a few, Mr. Mayor. The Borough Assembly at their meeting on Tuesday night did move for the concept of forming a Ketchikan Shipyard Task Force and the assistant manager had a report on that. The Council is inclined to participate, looking for two council members who would be interested in serving on that. So if you'd let us know, we'll let the borough know. I did want to alert the, the Council and we have Southeast Conference next week plus the, the Hydro Power Conference at the Civic Center. We have an issue with our door replacement contract. If you have detailed questions, Mr. Hilsen can address them, but either the replacement doors will, will be up and everything will be fine, or we're gonna have temporary doors for those conferences, we're not sure which yet. Apparently there is a issue with the hinges and we're hoping they're gonna be here to get the permanent doors up. If not, we'll, we'll be doing something with temporary doors. There was a memo from the Assistant relative to the latest cost estimates from Moffett and Nickel on the pinnacle and the corrosion protection within the packet. I'm not asking for any council direction tonight. We're continuing to evaluate those numbers. I had a conversation with the Port and Harbors Director this morning, or I'm, I'm sorry, this afternoon, and we'll be bringing back something for council consideration at the meeting number twentieth, but I guess to say I'm disappointed is a, is a, is a major understatement. It was laid on the table tonight, it, it had been submitted to be on the original agenda, but I did want to bring the Council's attention to the latest round of testing for our disinfection byproducts. It was a very good report and I want to commend Mr. Kleniker and his staff. You know, we'll always be saying there's the next battle or the, the next warm period, but we had such good results in this round of testing, I, I think is a real credit to John and I want to commend him for, for all the work he's done relative to that, that effort. As Trey indicated tonight, we two are, are looking at water levels, lake levels. We did get some relief, we're expected to get some more, I guess, this weekend, but if we feel at some point action is required, we will definitely let the Council know what our thinking is and, and seek your direction. So I think we're all on the same page relative to, to trying to, to monitor that closely. And then the last thing I have, I guess, is in response to Mr. Kuz's earlier statement tonight on, on our motions. You'll, you'll note that often we will have language in a motion seeking a budget transfer which moves the funds from one account to the other account and then we'll ask you to approve the spending from that account that the funds were just moved to, and we've always done that to, to try to satisfy the auditors, but if the Council wants to give me direction tonight that when you authorize a transfer, you're also then approving the subsequent funding out of that account, I can start shortening those motions a little bit and try to make Mr. Kuz happy, so.
Whatever the Council's.
If you wanna, if you wanna give me that direction, that's how we'll proceed tonight or in future motions, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Carl. City clerk file. City attorney file.
Your Honor.
Future agenda item. Mayor and Council, comments. Dave.
Yeah, I just probably have a question. Can we go on record as the Council and recommend against ballot measure one?
Didn't we already do that?
Did we do it already?
Thought we did.
I think there was.
I did. Because I get, I get my, my pebble minds dish.
Yeah.
Can we advertise that? All we did was sit here and chew.
And I think we could have our name added to the list if we wanted to, so I think.
Yeah, because it's gonna be important, that's just another roadless rule, only maybe worse.
War is one.
Thank you, Dave. Judy.
I have a couple of things. One, maybe not that important to some people, but drives me crazy, I'm wondering who's in charge of the maintenance at our very expensive library, the outside landscaping, I mean, it's weeds and everywhere I go in town lately, it just seems like there's weeds everywhere and most of the places that I'm seeing are on state roads, but where we're responsible, I'd sure like to see us clean that up. And I want to go back to that one motion that we approved for the garage person. It's just very important to me as people come and talk to me that we provide to our existing staff every opportunity to move up like we did for Mr. Brackey. I respect everything that you do, Mark, and I respect you, Carl, but you know, the, the fact of the matter is that morale isn't that great and people do come to us and I just want to be sure that we're making those opportunities available. Also, I'm really happy that we approved the sales tax holiday because as someone who manages the mall and has very little retail in there at the moment, those people really appreciate them and it levels the playing field for them for, you know, at least one day. And then in regards to vigor, I read today that they got a one billion dollar contract with the Army and although I understand that they're looking at that work being done in Seattle or Oregon, they're kind of debating right now, so hopefully they'll take that into consideration, maybe some of our people that are working here that are gonna lose their jobs, maybe get an opportunity to go down. And that's all I have.
Janeway.
I've got a couple of things too. At our last meeting, I got to thinking afterwards regarding the, the woman who came regarding the water testing that they're doing from the, from April to the end of this month or August, and I'm wondering what it would cost if we, and maybe possibly talking to the borough, looked into funding the testing through the winter so that we could rule out some of the issues that people have with it being cruise ships or being local issues of the contamination in the ocean. And it, only because it's like, why are we not funding to figure out where the, where it's coming from and what, what we can do to eliminate it? The other thing I, I was looking at was this summer, just driving in town Mondays, I've had, seen two incidents and I'm curious to know where the state is on the blinking pedestrian lights, crossing lights, because one, from Tatsudas to New York Cafe at night, there is no light. I've had multiple people tell me they've almost hit the, they've, they've jumped the bold outs because it's so dark in there, they cannot see. I drove it the other night in the rain and even at twenty miles an hour, if there was anyone that walked out, never would have saw him. I was, had the pleasure of being, coming by the Shon Bar bypass, heading north, and one of the Princess buses was hit in the turn lane. Well, as I was passing, I noticed that there was people in the crosswalk, so I stopped, assuming they were gonna cross, looking at the guy across from that way, the opposite lane, they were crossing because he was stopped. I had someone blaring their horn profusely.
I'm sorry.
Well, I don't think it was you, Kyle, but if it was, good thing I have tinted windows because I was doing, you know, anyway.
You're saluting.
I was thinking it, but if I, you know, there, I could have easily just gone and then the person behind me would have hit them. I think we have multiple crossing zones that when you have a larger vehicle in the turn lane, you are blind. So at any time, if I hadn't noticed that there were people going to be in that crosswalk, they would have, I mean, there's, they combine, come out from under that, from in front of that bus and boom. I don't think, I don't think the state understands what we're up against when we have twelve thousand people downtown in the streets and those poor flaggers, those guys, I, my hat's off to them because Monday was absolutely atrocious. Some of those kids have their backs to people who are flat out rude and, and they're, you know, they're going right through them, almost driving right through the flaggers and I'm just like, yeah, anyway, so I don't know if it, we need more flaggers at certain points, we have people crossing at our favorite spot down there at the Federal Building, we got, it's just waiting to happen, especially at Shon Bar if people crossing there. That was one, and on a good note, just went to the film festival and I've been asked by multiple people that, that was, that place was standing room only, it was amazing and they wanted, people were asking for a second showing, so if KP is up for it, there's people who want to see it.
Nothing for you? Dave?
Couple of things, Mayor. Now, fir, 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 first of all, in response to Council meeting, Reverend Eze's comments about people coming to talk, it's interesting, since I went to work at the jail, I don't get those calls, those people, just don't come to ask me questions anymore. So, so maybe you need to not be actually in your office, as you probably. Couple other things, I appreciate staff's report on the, on the discharges. I still think there's a, and I, you know, we've gone over this a million times on the idea of the, that, you know, yeah, they're, in some ways are discharging better stuff than we're discharging, but, and I don't want to penalize the ones who are, who are doing their, their part to make their, their discharges even better, but still discharging in, in the ports, I think sets, sets a certain, you know, I'm not gonna say it doesn't pass the smell test because this doesn't all smell, but there's just something about it that, you know, and even the visitors go, well, get that, and then you see, you see this discharge. I still, we, we need to stay on top of that and no matter what the state says about how it's, it's perfectly fine, we've heard that from D C a few million times before and it's not always perfectly fine. I share the, the manager's reaction to the most recent numbers from our port consultant and I'm beginning to wonder now if one, one time, okay, two times, okay, three times.
Really?
There's, there's a problem with the process if we're, if we're getting, if, and I'm not, I'm not saying that the sixteen, seventy percent numbers aren't accurate, I'm just saying that somewhere in the process, it's broken down, if we're, if we're getting earlier numbers that are so low that they're gonna triple, I think we need to, you know. And, and finally, Mr. Flora and I had a meeting this la, you know, a couple of years ago with the Assistant City Manager and the Port Director with the, with the folks from RCL, not NCL, but RCL, and, and also the Borough Department folks were there as well. It's very clear that we have some very serious decisions to make on where we want the port to go because all these companies now are lining up and saying, we'll help you with this, we'll help you with that, and part of the problem is as we continue to meet with them, we ourselves don't know. And as this process goes ahead with the people that could not, could not pronounce something, I think we, we all need to be thinking individually. What do we, you know, how do we see this process playing out? Because the industry right now, and this is a complete change from the last ten years, they are lining up and ready to help us now, obviously, once again, maybe in some cases it's not a help, but in general, we need to have a sense ourselves where we want to go, because they all want to get going now, they all, they all want to do an upline and stuff, they all, they all want to help us build more docks and we need to be able to, you know, know what we want. And I don't think right now, at least I don't certainly, I have a feeling about what I want, I think, I, I, I'm pretty sure most of the rest of us know either, so we need to be working on that. So, we need to be working on that.
Mark?
Nothing, Your Honor.
I thank everybody for their patience tonight and their hard work here. The decisions we make aren't always easy. But I appreciate the passion that we do it and the concerns we have for our employees. And I think that should just be forefront for everybody, that we have tough decisions to make, so, thank you. Other than that, I don't have anything else. That leaves us with one more executive session.
One?
Yeah, I don't think we have to do that.
We already have it, and it's really good.
Already did there, yeah.
It feels like we have five or six, which is...
So, we have item B1, which is request for executive session. KPU telecommunications division employee retention compensation strategy. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the City Council declare that it is in the best interest of the city to discuss competitive strategies and options of KPU's telecommunications divisions relating to employee retention and compensation in executive session in accordance with KMC two oh four oh two five A1, which includes the need to discuss subjects, the knowledge of which would clearly have an immediate impact on the finances of the city.
Do I have a second? Been moving second. Ms. Kirk?
Kuz?
Yes.
Kuyfer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
Does anybody need a torch, Rick? You guys all good? You ready to go?
Is it going to be a lot?
All right, we'll come back into session, and we met in executive session and received information. And so, we are now at the point where, as long as we're German.
Mark, give me a call when you want to.
I'll do a call.
Thank you.